Call the meeting to order. I'd like to remind everybody in the audience to please turn off your cell phones for the duration of the meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Ford.
Here.
Mayor Protem Moreno.
Here.
Councilman Benson.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Present.
Councilman Teeter.
Here.
Councilman Bullock.
Here.
Councilman McElDowney.
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilman Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Let the record show that everyone's here this evening. Will everyone please rise and join me in a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, sir. Councilman Douglas just informed us that Larry Quintana's mother has passed away, so keep her in your prayers.
A pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the staff please pass around the microphones so that the audience can introduce themselves?
Hi, I'm Nelson Lamprecht. I'm just here to express my interest in the fracking debate.
Hi, I'm Michael Scanlon. I'm here to speak regarding fracking.
Hi, I'm Dave Rose from Brighton. Just here to listen to the discussion.
Teresa Haft.
Kathy McIntyre.
Hi, I'm Danya Howell. I'm a candidate for Adams County Commissioner District Two.
Christie Douglas.
Shirley Curless.
Phil Perez.
Yeah, Maserna.
Mary Morton, ACSD 14, BOE.
Dodge Morton.
Bob Meidner.
Jennifer Refner.
Laura Taves.
Hannah Mullen, Congressman, Promoter's Office.
Greg Clemens, Public Works Director.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Michelle Hill, Economic Development.
Brian Garner, Planning.
Greg Fulton, Colorado Motor Carrier Association.
Steve Timm, City Planner.
Ellen Howe, Board of Adjustments.
Shaila Zaro.
Michelle Rogers, City Manager's Office.
Monty Whaley.
Chris Kramer, Planning.
Jim Hayes, Community Development and Economic Development.
Roger Tinkenberg, Finance.
Charles Sonier, Police Department.
Chris Thompson.
Carolyn White.
Tim Knight.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here this evening. Next, I would like to recognize Councilmember Benson and our attorney, Bob Gaylor, who just recently have had birthdays so that we can sing happy birthday to those folks. Go ahead and lead us off, Mayor Protem.
(Singing) Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Bob and Jim, happy Thank you for that music.[783.91][783.91](Laughter)
Now, we figured last, the last meeting went so well having music at the beginning, we'd try it again. And it's...
How do we share this, Ken?
No, 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 we're gonna share it. Don't worry about that.
Oh, it's gonna be shared.[798.22][798.22](Laughter)
Next item on the agenda is citizen communication. And we do have the fracking item as an agenda item. And those folks who want to speak on fracking, Bob, you wanna lay that up?
An item that's on the agenda should be discussed at that time. So, anyone that's signed up for fracking should wait until the agenda item is called up on the agenda.
Okay. And then likewise on the trucking issue?
Likewise on the trucking.
Just so you folks know, we're not passing you by. There will be a time where you'll have the opportunity to speak, but it'll be at the time of that agenda item for the trucking and for the fracking. The only other thing on here that I see, let's see, Mr. Guillermo Serna, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Guillermo Serna, 14122 East 100 in second place, Commerce City.
Welcome.
I just want to thank the city for putting up our sign as far as the street number and all that. It was taken down with the snow, and I was just getting ready to come and complain, and somehow they found out or something. They put it up, and it's, it's good. And the other thing is, the theme for this year's coming parade, if we have come up with anything like that.
Not yet.
And if you haven't, we'll wait. No biggie.
Okay.
That's all.
Any comments for Mr. Serna? Seeing none, thanks for coming in.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On the trucking industry item, that item is not on the agenda as, as an action item for the council, so...
Then I will call those folks forward.
If someone has signed up for the trucking industry, they should be allowed to speak on citizen communication.
I need some help with this one right there. This one. I have one here that I can't make out. The address is 9758. I can't make out what street or the name. Is that person here?
Us.
Okay, on fracking?
Yeah, we're for fracking.
Okay, then I'll call you up at that time. What's your name?
I'm Tim Knight.
Tim Knight, okay. Next, I'll call Mr. Greg Fulton. Come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Greg Fulton. I'm the president of the Colorado Motor Carrier Association, 460 Elati Street, Denver, Colorado. And I just wanted to take a couple minutes. Can I hand out, is there a possibility I could hand out some items there? We could. And first, I wanted to thank the council and the city created a working group relating to, you know, the issue related to sales tax on owner-operator, what we call settlements on that end of it. And we had had some issues on this, some serious concerns. And what I did was put together a couple pages here. And I did want to mention, we represent over 600 companies and corporations within the state of Colorado. Seventy-nine of those have operations within Commerce City. We have several thousand jobs. We actually probably are the largest employer within Commerce City, our many companies. This issue is a very big one for us. I would tell you, it is a situation that could threaten the livelihood of some of our companies, or at least force them to move, actually, because of the challenges it would pose. I'm not gonna take a lot of time on this. I have a little two-page or there, a one-page overview what the issue is. For those of you who may not know, is what we have in our industry, we have little owner-operators, which is a one-person truck operation. That person that works, in many cases, you know, they're their own little independent business. They pay all their own taxes, fees, fuel, and all that. What they do is they contract with a motor carrier to move freight. It's a lot easier for both the motor carrier to contract or expand operations. It's great for the little owner-operator. Most of our board of directors, which has 59 people on it, of which half are from companies on this, in Commerce City. Those individuals, actually, many of our people on the board started with just that one truck. So, it's a critical part of our operation. What is happening here, actually, and I think we would hope it's kind of an error, sort of a misinterpretation, or maybe a change may need to be done in the code, it'd be the taxation of that service. We pay a settlement, usually based on mileage. And we're paying that essentially to that owner-operator for providing that transportation service. And I will say, I think there's a thing on our end of it, none of our members are aware of ever paying this tax, not only here, but we checked actually with the American Trucking Association anywhere in the country. So, we would be setting a unique, and we would say, bad precedent here. I think a lot of folks wonder, how do we bring sales tax or our benefit to the city? I would remind everyone that when we look at those, about half of those companies are service providers. When you go to Volvo and there's a $120,000 tractor, it's three and a half percent to Commerce City. The tires, which are TDS over there, which run from $500 to $1,000, and we need 18 of them, and that, that all comes there. All of those companies have located in Commerce City to be proximate to these trucking companies. And I will end my remarks right there. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Is there any comments for Mr. Fulton? Seeing none, thanks for coming in tonight. Oh, go ahead, Jim. Councilmember Benson?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fulton. Is this gonna hinge on what the definition is of a lease?
You know, it is, Councilman. I would say, if I can, could I take a minute just to explain that, Mayor?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
We have a term within the contracts for the subcontract end of it. The term lease is in there, and that is in there because of the Federal Leasing Act. This terminology we put in there specifically because of the federal law. It is by no means a lease in any way, shape, or manner. It is a contract for service. But the Federal Leasing Act dictates how that agreement, actually, in terms of the use of that piece of equipment, in terms of going to be used by the owner-operator in conjunction with this arrangement.
I wonder how a generic lease is defined. I mean, Mr. Gaylor, maybe you can give us some help on that. We're gonna have an executive session to go over this. I guess I'd like to hear what the general definition of a lease is and how, how this does or does not fit into it. Because according to this letter, we would be the only jurisdiction in the United States imposing this kind of a, of a tax on what's called a lease but really is not. So, I don't... And that's another question I'd like to ask Mr. Tinkenberg. If we did away with this, how much would it cost the city every year?
Okay, well, first of all, the tax code does have a definition of a lease, as well as a rental. And the complication that Greg, Mr. Fulton, has, has brought to the council's attention, and that we've been struggling with as a staff, is that the fact that we have the auditors go out, audit these transactions, and see a document that says lease in it, so they pick it up as a lease. And what we've been struggling with is that there's an explanation from the trucking industry's point of view why they have in their documents the term lease, when their explanation is, is that it's really not a lease. And that's the complication, and that's what we're dealing with. And there should be a solution to this, but as yet, we haven't reached a solution because the, the trucking industry has an explanation of why that document is termed a lease when it isn't a lease. But that causes a real problem from the auditor's point of view to see a document that says one thing and then it means something else. But that's what we're struggling with. Is that a fair analysis?
I would just note that, that what we've always, as I said, indicated is because we are guided by that. We said, what we really need to look at is what is, what actually occurs. What actually is occurring, and I think, you know, Bob and his folks would agree on this end of it, is the fact is, is that's a service that we are actually paying for. We've actually been doing this in Commerce City for probably, I would bet, maybe 50 years and that. We've been doing it throughout the country that long. And, you know, I will say, this is a very first time, at least in our time that we've heard of the issue, and it's the very first time our national association. So, really, I think I can understand the element, but we're in a predicament on our side, where we're trying to end up meeting certain federal sort of standards, and sort of trying to meet with what we call the Department of Labor in terms of who's on these issues as well, and trying to make it as blending everything, and it's not easy.
I would like to say real quick that our citizen communication is limited to three minutes. However, when, when a council member has a question, I'm gonna allow those questions to take place. So, please stay there, Mr. Fulton. I just want everybody in the audience to know, as long as there's a councilperson that has questions, it's the only reason I'm allowing this to go over three minutes. So, if you get up here and I give you three minutes and nobody has a question, don't feel offended that you're not getting to stand up here as long as Mr. Fulton.
Right.
Let me see. You still have more? Go ahead, Mr. Benson.
I'm familiar with situations where you would have a, an owner of a truck, where they would go to a leasing company and lease their truck to the leasing company, and then they would work for the leasing company and get paid by the mile or however. But they, they actually own the truck, and that's not what this situation is, I take it.
This, you know, Mr. Councilman, really what this is, is we have an actual motor carrier, a company. We've got a number of those in the city. We've been over here for a number of years. And what they're doing is, is it's a model that, that they use, which is a very effective model, actually, in terms of like when you're trying to size up your fleets and all this. You know, we find that these folks, when they have their own business, they're extremely productive. They're hard-working folks. They actually perform tremendously well. Plus, it gives them a chance, actually, if they wish to get, like most of our other companies have, get a start in actually building an overall business. But it's that relationship between a company, where we have, between that, actually, a motor carrier and these individuals. And, you know, we have in Colorado alone, probably well over 5,000 of these little folks. Many of them live in Commerce City. There's a number of them, who are, actually have their own truck. Sometimes, maybe, you know, we've gotten a few calls from the neighborhoods, by the way. You know, we have told the company that works with them to kind of make sure they don't put it in the neighborhood, but that's one of the things. But that's how that works, Councilman. I don't know if I answered your question.
I was just, we're not talking about the kind of situation that I just mentioned, are we? That's not what's happening here.
What we have is, you're talking about somebody who buys a truck.
Right.
And then they take it and they lease it back to themselves. They're putting, putting a holding company together.
But that's not what this situation is.
No, not at all, sir.
I know. I once represented an individual who had stolen a truck and leased it to Interstate Transportation of stolen...
This is definitely not that, though.
Be careful, Mr. Benson, with some information we probably don't want to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.[1593.22][1593.22](Laughter) Councilman Teeter.
Thank you, Mr. Fulton, for coming tonight. I did speak to Mr. Fulton earlier in the week and a few of his colleagues. I, at the time, I didn't really understand where he was coming from, but after talking to him, I am now very aware of what they're facing. Not only are we facing the trucking companies, we're also looking at the tire companies, admissions companies, anybody that deals with the trucking company is also gonna affect if these people decide to pull out on us.
Okay, Mr. Ma, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Carson?
Mr. Fulton, thank you for coming, and it was nice talking to you the other day. You made reference to the fact that through the homework you've done, you're under the understanding Commerce City is the only place that you can find doing this?
Councilwoman, let me say on our end of it, you know, we have companies in every state, I mean, every county and every major city within the state of Colorado. I've been in my job for 17 years. I have people on my board who have been in trucking for 40 years. They've never heard of the issue coming up before. We check with our national group. The person Bob Pitcher is their state laws, which is a person who checks on state and local laws. Bob is probably one of the most well-versed people in the entire country on that. Bob has no understanding. In fact, they hadn't even heard of that, that happening before. And so, I, I think maybe there is sometimes a possibly, you know, sometimes when you get into these elements, it gets confusing in terms, and when you're looking at some of these items. But I would just say, we have not seen it ourselves. We're not aware of it anywhere. Our national folks haven't, and a board of directors made up of 59 people, ranging anywhere from 30 to 82, actually, of which 60-some years in trucking hadn't seen it before.
So, Commerce City is the only one, to your knowledge, interpreting the word lease in there to this definition?
Councilwoman, I would say that, that probably fits it. And let me say that, I think Roger and Bob and Tom Aker have worked and struggled, kind of worked, struggled with us to get there. So, I want to give credit to those folks in the council and part of them to do this. So, I think it's just one of those items where, you know, the word that triggers this, which is lease, you know, I think what happens is, most people look at what the real activity there is. The real activity is a service agreement out there. And I think what happens is, is that, you know, if, if we could strike certain language in some, one place here, then we trigger other things relating to our friends at the federal or Department of Labor and other things like that. So, we're very cautious on these types of contracts. And, you know, there's a, it's like I said, it's a patchwork of bringing some of these things together to make sure you meet all the federal and state law requirements.
Okay, that was all I had, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman McElDowney?
Another subject, actually. No questions. No? Councilman Douglas?
Councilman Douglas?
Thank you, Mr. Fulton, for coming forward with this. I'd like to meet with you, if you can give any information to Bob or Brian, to discuss this. I'm of interest in finding out more. I was sick last week, so I heard Mr. Teeter had sat down and spoke with you, and at that time, I was too sick to extend a meeting with you at that time. I had a question for Roger. How did the auditors come up with this to determine that this is just for the industry here? And how many other businesses are audited at the same level?
Roger, let me ask the attorney real quick. We have an executive session concerning this, and I think that's where Roger's going to lay out the information that we need, is that correct?
That's the intent.
And so if we have questions for Roger, we should be taking that into executive session. But once we're done with the executive session, then I think it's prudent that you have that information and we can share that with the public.
I just wanted to make a closing remark here, so that with Greg present, we clarify that I don't think there's a dispute or an issue here between the auditors and the trucking industry as to the taxability of a true lease. I mean, that, lease of a vehicle is subject to a tax. If you go and lease a vehicle, an automobile, on a trip, you're going to be paying sales tax on that lease. So we don't have an issue on that. The reason this is before the council, for some direction for staff here, because this is going to take, if you decide to try to address this problem from a council's point of view, it's going to probably take an amendment to the tax code. And the problem that the auditors have is they're enforcing the tax code as written, because when it says "a lease" in the document, they're enforcing it as a lease. And the problem that we all are incurring in trying to reach a resolution here, and that's why it's before the council this evening for discussion in exec session, is that under the tax code, and Greg agrees with this, is that a lease is taxable. The problem is, is this really a lease? Even though it says "a lease" on the document, is it really a lease? And that's where some direction needs to occur from council. If we amend the tax code to redefine what a lease is, and that's what this is all about. So, and Roger does have an executive session presentation, but in all fairness to Greg here, I felt appropriate, as part of the citizen communication, to bring it forward because he won't be attending the exec session.
Correct.
And so that's where we're at.
Okay. One second, Mr. Fulton. I want to try to stick with the three-minute thing, and unless someone has a question for you, I don't want to continue to go over.
Can I just respond, just one item, and I think, you know, just one thing, on how things really, I think, got kind of, I'd say, kind of off track. I think one of the real problems that happened is, you know, there was a change to the tax code that the council adopted. I mean, the staff had prepared something to clarify it. And that change, I will indicate, was, we would say somewhat a little bit more than a clarification in some of our eyes. And what it did, I think, is we had no business, you know, our industry had no opportunity to look at some of those changes. And I understand what they were trying to do, but that further pushed us down this road here. And I think when we look at that end of it, we're looking at that right now and saying, well, look, you know, part of that language represents part of the problem that we have here. And I would just encourage you, counsel, when we're looking at some of those changes like that, even like a clarification, asking that industry have an opportunity to comment and be part of that process. And I appreciate all the stuff. And let me tell you, Bob Gaylor has done a great job working with us. I've worked with Bob for years, and Roger and Tom have been helpful. But I think part of that process, that one step maybe, we could have ended up avoiding some of the problems that we have today.
Mr. Fulton?
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for coming in this evening. Secondly, you know what? This is very dear to our hearts as a council. We want to make sure that we create business opportunities in this community, that we're competitive with the other cities. So we are taking this very seriously. Let us have our executive session, and let's see what comes out of this.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. If any of the Councilmen would like to meet with any of our, be more than happy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I'll call Shirley Curless.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Shirley Curless, and I live at 5721 East 67th Avenue here in Commerce City. And I am here tonight to see if you will help me to become a law-abiding citizen, along with other dog owners that are letting their dogs run off-leash. We have the land, we have the property, we have the parks, and perhaps you can give us a designated spot where we can do this. Our dogs are well-behaved, they're well-mannered, they're not vicious, and many cities have done this. I would like it to be in the core city. We have small yards, and for one, my little dog needs to run, and I cannot run fast enough to get him the proper exercise. I will say that I got caught the other day. It was very icy and snowing, and I had my dog off-leash, and I got caught. I will say that the officer was very nice and very understanding. He gave me a warning, not a citation, because I told him the reason my dog was off-leash, and I think he has seen me before, walking my dog, that it was icy and it was snowing, and I was afraid if the dog pulled just a little bit too quick, I would fall. And I'm sure that he wondered why an old lady that was afraid of falling didn't stay home on a cold day. Mayor Ford, you know me.
Absolutely.
So, all I would ask is, oh, and I want to congratulate you on getting some grant money for the arsenal, and maybe just a very minute amount of that money could be used to make me a law-abiding citizen. I don't think we have to discuss this. Just let me know where it's going to be and when it's going to be available. And I'll be your law-abiding citizen again.
Is there any questions from the council, from Mrs. Curless? Shirley, thank you for coming in. I know we have a dog park, do we not?
Oh, do.
And it's on 104th Avenue and Havana, and it is fenced in, so you can go there anytime.
Oh, I didn't realize.
And it's really more in between the south and the north. It's pretty well situated, but there is a large piece of land. Maybe someone from the parks can mention exactly how big it is. But there is an off-leash dog park in Commerce City already there for you to be a law-abiding citizen if you'd like to take advantage of it.
And there is not one here in the core city?
No, it's halfway in between. It's on 104th and Havana, right over by the old Payless Cashways.
Okay.
102nd Havana? Yeah. So there is one, and it's very large. So it's a nice place. So we, you know, we'd ask you to try to utilize that, and if we have the space to do some more of those, and it's something that gets utilized and is a good tax expenditure, or something that we can produce more of, then we'll definitely take a look at that. But I would like you to try to use that one if you can. It's not that far away.
Okay, I will use it.
Perfect. And if you need any more information on exactly where it is and how to get into it or gain access, I'm sure our Parks Department will be more than happy to help you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, I will call Tracy Snyder.
Good evening. Mayor and Council, Tracy Snyder, 5991 Newport Street, Commerce City, Colorado 80022. And I know you've seen me for the last three weeks in a row about the same issue, but I'm going to talk just a couple more minutes on it. I am very glad that Mr. Fulton was able to come this evening and address all of you, and I also wanted to extend my appreciation to those of you that have talked with him. Councilman Teeter, I appreciate that, and I know Councilwoman Carson spoke with him, and I know Mr. Douglas, Councilman Douglas is getting ready to do so as well. So I wanted to thank those of you that have talked with him, but it's very difficult for him to explain the implications of this situation in three minutes to you before you go into the exec session. So I would just encourage those of you that haven't, and I know Mayor Ford, you spoke with him as well, and I appreciate that. I would just encourage the rest of you that haven't spoken with him to really come and sit down and have a talk with him, and to be able to better understand the situation that's going on and the seriousness of it. You guys know me, I wouldn't be here three weeks in a row on an issue if I didn't think that it had serious implications to the businesses that are in the city. We're talking about 79 good businesses that have been here a long, long time, and a tax that hasn't been implemented anywhere else in the country. So, yes, it did come as a result of the tax, you know, the issue to be raised, it's been changed, the tax issues have been changed, the new tax code. But I really do think that there could be a way to work it out if, you know, everybody was to sit down and get on the same page with all of it and figure out, you know, how things could be done differently. So I'm just encouraging all of you to, when you go into your exec session, to have an open mind about it, and also to get more information from Mr. Fulton before you make any kind of decision on it. So, did anyone have any questions for me?
Councilwoman Carson?
Ms. Snyder, thanks for coming. It's nice to see you again. And the only thing that I would say is, I don't think I fully agree with you. I thought Mr. Fulton actually has this down so well.
Oh, he's great.
That he tells a lot of information in the three minutes. Him and I didn't speak for a great length of time, and he really is somebody who has...
He's very knowledgeable.
Put this down in a way that I think it is, it's very easy to understand what he is saying to us. So I don't think any of us are going in there foggy-brained with what was said. Setting up here, you know how that is, it's different than what, I guess, the perspective is down there. He was looking at us, and I think he did an excellent job, so. And I have no problems of helping out where I can interject something in there. But I, like I said, with the paper he gave us and that explanation he just did, I thought he did an excellent job, so.
I appreciate that, Ms. Carson. Thank you so much. And I do, you know, I'm glad that you really have a firm understanding of the issue, and anyone who doesn't, I know he would be more than happy to sit down with them and talk with them. So I know there's been a couple of times it's taken about an hour to an hour and a half on some of the discussions with some of the council members. So I'm glad you were able to grasp it in the three minutes. I know there's a few others that took a little longer, because some of the tax code can be complicated. So, you know, there's a lot of things going on when you're a councilperson, and I completely understand that, so. But thank you for your help, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
Seeing no others, thank you for coming in this evening.
Of course.
And we'll get more during our executive session.
Okay, great. You guys have a good evening. Thank you.
Mr. McAldoney, your lights on. Did you have something?
Actually, a motion I'd like to make regarding the agenda, sir.
Okay.
Would like to move that we add an executive session component to our agenda item for, with regard to the ordinance on second reading, ordinance 1880, that we begin that with an executive session with our special counsel and the city attorney.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I will.
Mr. Bullock?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second to entertain a executive session concerning the ordinance on second reading for fracking. Is there any discussion?
I would just add, or ask the city attorney, is that applicable under CRS 24-6-402, or do we need to do another provision?
Yes, we, the statute needs to be cited with regard to that, and that'll be for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding the issue of moratorium for the fracking in the city of Commerce City pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 for B.
I would amend my motion accordingly.
Okay. Is a second, okay?
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Moreno?
Quick question. Would the executive session come after an opportunity for citizens to speak on the issue? Just because we have quite a few citizens here, I think it'd be fair to give them time to speak on it before we enter executive session?
Certainly. We've obviously got the agenda item that sets the component for the citizen communication, and I would ask that, yes, this occur immediately after the citizen input.
Great. Thank you.
Is that okay with you, as a motion maker? Are we going to do this prior to the executive session? Okay? A motion and a second, seeing no other discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Just for you folks in the audience who are here for the fracking issue, you will be given an opportunity for your three-minute communication on the agenda item prior to the executive session. So if you'll just bear with us until we get to that point. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. There's one set of minutes for council's approval for December 12, 2011. What are the desires of council? Mr. Moreno?
Move to approve the meeting minutes of December 12, 2011.
Okay. Mr. McAldoney?
Second to motion.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Minutes are taken care of.
There's something wrong with those minutes. You were sick that night.
No, that's not when I was sick.
Wasn't?
Mm-mm. That's December 12. I was sick the following meeting. So I already checked that one out, Renee. Thanks, though, for looking out for me. Next item on the agenda, there's one resolution that requires city council approval this evening. I'm ready for a motion. Mr. McAldoney?
Move to approve Resolution 2012-04.
Okay, Mr. Moreno?
Second to motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I do have discussion.
Mr. Moreno?
I had a quick question for staff regarding this resolution. We received a list of all of the streets included in the HUTF resolution. I had a question about, under the section that says, I think it stands for condition, C-O-N-D, I was just wondering what the codes actually mean. There's different codes, G, F, P. I was wondering what those mean.
Mayor, members of the council, let me see if I can find that reference. Let's see.
Mayor Paul Tamoreno, do you have a page where, that you're referring to?
It's the list of the streets that are included in the HUTF calculation, and it's the third-to-last column.
Mr. Coleman, I believe Mr. Moreno's correct. I think this is fair, good, and poor. If I remember seeing these listed in Dr. Cog's discussion previously, the three codes are F, G, and P.
That's correct. Poor, on that condition, that's what those items mean. There are other categories and listings in putting this report together. The state has a very specific standard on how those roads are put together and how the report is prepared. So if you're, there are other questions, may have some information, but that applies to the condition.
Okay. And a question about, on the signature sheet aspect of it, it says that we have 4.86 miles of non-HUT-eligible streets that are not maintained. What's an example of the streets that are not maintained?
Private streets. Another example would be dirt road. Although we spend resources grading them, that's not determined to be eligible under the HUTF.
So much like Elm Street over by the Ace Hardware?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McAldoney, did you have questions?
No, that was from previous thing.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, Resolution 2012- Title reads Resolution 2012-04, Resolution approving City 2011 HUFT Report.
Thank you. Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda, we have two public hearings on tonight's agenda. The first is a zoning ordinance, Z 896-12. I will open the public hearing and ask staff to come forward, make their presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Let me get the right presentation up here real quick. Okay, this is case number Z 89612, and this is for the DIA Tech Center. One more night for you this evening. The applicant is requesting vested property rights for that development. I'm sure you're familiar with the location, about off Tower Road and 81st Avenue. And just a quick overview of the DIA Tech Center. So, of course, we annexed and zoned that PUD earlier this year. It's about 200 acres, includes nine planning areas that are generally, have land uses that are DIA tech and commercial in nature. That includes the Second Creek floodplain and the tributary. The specific request in this case would more or less extend the approval time for development plans and subdivision plats. It would make them valid for 10 years rather than two years, and that would give them a termination date of February of 2022. The land development code right now allows a development plan or a PUD development permit, gives it a standard two-year approval time. After that, if that lapses, the applicant would have to come back and reapply for a development plan approval and resubmit. Same thing with subdivision plats. Those are approved for 60 days. If they're not fully executed, then they would have to reapply at that time. State statute, for a basic request that would come before you, allows for three years or more. It's up to the applicant if they want to request more. In this case, they're requesting for 10 years. And the only caveat on that is that it would have to have a subdivision, or excuse me, a development, development, excuse me, a development agreement in conjunction with the approval on that, which we have drafted as well right now. So, bottom line for this is that development plans and plats still go through our normal planning process, so the full review. They would have to meet all the requisite approvals at that time. The request is logical in this economy, given the current economy. Multiple documents would safeguard the city's interest in this case. That includes the zone document, which includes all the entitlements and the land uses that were approved, the DIA Tech Center design guidelines, the sketch plat, the land development code, and then finally that vested rights development agreement. So basically, once again, it just, it overall just extends the life of the development plan approval. That's pretty much it. That went to Planning Commission recently. They voted 5-0 in favor of that. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those at this time.
Any questions of the staff regarding this hearing? Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Garner, I think I read in the packet that typical vested property rights are for a period of two years under the land development code. Is that correct?
Councilman, that's correct.
And I understand extending it to 10 years. I was just curious, I thought one of the conditions in the two-year agreement was that it would expire two years after if no development has occurred. But I think I read in the Planning Commission meeting notes that the applicant expects to begin on the initial first phase of development right away. So I'm curious as why we'd have to extend it out 10 years if they plan to start right away.
So over the next 10 years, anytime a development plan comes in for any of those planning areas, so as development comes online and we approve development plans one at a time, they would be approved for two years from that point. So if one came in in 2014, it would be valid until, under the land development code, it would be valid until 2016. Under this scenario, with this approval, they would be valid no matter what until 2022.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Thank you for the presentation. Well, Dominic, I was going to ask about the same question. So I think as far as when we first passed this, the way things were explained, and it says right here, they're going to start right away, I would like to see, just to keep the two-year and not do a 10-year, seeing about the growth and everything. And by that time, the on-ramp will be hopefully installed by then. But that's just my opinion on that. Thanks.
Thank you.
I would like to add, I understand the reasonings for the 10-year just because of the way that you have the planned areas, and they may not get to one of those back areas for quite some time, and this extends that out. So I understand why the staff is recommending this, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify in favor of or against this particular hearing? Please come forward. The applicant?
Yes.
Okay, come on forward and then state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor, council, city staff. My name is Carolyn White. I'm land use counsel for the applicant, DIATC LLC. My address is 410 17th Street in Denver, 80202. As Mr. Garner said, we are requesting that the normal statutory three-year vesting period or the default two-year period of approval in the Commerce City Code be extended to 10 years. And the reasons for that are twofold. One is this is the economy, and obviously, as you know, this is an uncertain economy. And although you did approve the annexation and the zoning of this 200-acre project back in December, and now it is the developer's task to go out to lenders, to tenants, to developers, and try to make that vision a reality, the first thing that they ask is, do you have vested rights? And normally, under the Commerce City Code, we wouldn't get a vested right until each individual plat is filed. And Mayor, you hit the nail right on the head when you said, remember, there's all these different planning areas. So you're right, we could start tomorrow on Planning Area 1, and all that would vest, under the default provisions in the code, is Planning Area 1. It wouldn't lock in and guarantee all of the other planning areas 2 through 9. So the reason for our request is, you approve this as a holistic plan, as an integrated plan, with design requirements and so on, that it all fit together, and we would like to vest it as an integrated plan. And so in the absence of this request for the zoning to be vested instead of each individual plat, we wouldn't be able to do that. And then also, the extended length of time is, as Mr. Garner said, quite common in this economy. I can tell you, I've seen vested rights as long as 40 years, which is really a long time to think about in the future. But it's quite common to see for a project this large throughout the metro area and in the mountain range towns, 10 to 15 years as a reasonable time to lock in the approvals that you've already granted. So I hope that explains at least our motivation, why we're asking for it, and why we think it's reasonable in light of both the oversight that your staff is going to have as the rest of this development moves forward, and also the economy. Also, Mr. Thompson, the principal of DIATC LLC is here, and if you had any specific questions for him, I know he'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. I see Councilwoman Carson, do you have some questions for the applicant?
No, I don't think any questions. I just had some comments that, I have no difficulties with this. I think in this environment that we're in, business as usual doesn't work anymore. So I read this and understand it, and I think if you just stand ground in cities saying, we have plans, we stick to those plans, we don't deviate from those plans, you may not be able to go forward. A lot of those plans, I think, were put forward in a different mind frame. I think it's time we all sat back and reevaluated everything. So I have no problem with this.
Okay. Mr. Douglas, did you have something?
Yeah. Now, is this something that you guys just came up with after the fact, or was this something was a mindset before? I mean, how did this come about after we went through the approval process that now we're being hit with this? Because I understand what you're saying, but that wasn't part of the criteria to first start out with. So when was it determined to bring this forward in this manner?
Mayor, Councilman, I appreciate your question, and it's a perfectly valid one, and that did come up at the Planning Commission. The request for 10 years vesting was made at our very first pre-application meeting, and we've been having conversations with staff throughout the process, that that was our desire and our intent and our goal to implement that. For a variety of reasons, because of the notice requirements for vested rights and the fact that it has to be approved by ordinance, and the way we got the other hearings noticed, we weren't able to tee them up for you to hear them concurrently. But certainly, they have been processed with staff concurrently, considered concurrently, and we were forced because of a variety of scheduling issues to bring this to you separately. Certainly, it would not be our intent to do that otherwise.
Mr. Attorney?
I just wanted to add to the statements that have been made in this regard is that, first of all, the zoning issues and the subdivision issues and so forth, until you approved, you, the council, approved them, there weren't any vested rights to even talk about. So there had to be the approval process in place and accomplished before the vested rights issue came before council, and that's another reason why this issue now is being handled, because you had to first approve what you did approve before we even had a vested rights issue to even talk about.
Okay. And my comments are, going back to what I said earlier, if this was one parcel that we were talking about, instead of multiple parcels on this development, I would be totally against anybody having more than two years and tying up the land without seeing development move forward. Being that you have multiple parcels, I understand why it goes out 10 years. I would just implore you to work through the process. We'd like to see some development occur under the plan, and I know that's part of what was in the Planning Commission meeting minutes. So I understand what Mr. Douglas is saying, and I also understand that you may not get to that back one for some, quite some time, and there's issues of staff changes, council changes, things of that nature, and I understand you're just trying to protect the rights that you were given through our application process. So with that being said, if there are no other questions for the applicant, I will go back to the audience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to testify in favor of, or against, or for information only? Please state your name and address for the record.
Kristi Douglas, 10970 Unity Parkway, Commerce City, Colorado, 80022. I don't really understand what's going on here, so it's kind of hard for me to comment on this. I understand that they are developing several parcels of land and that the times are such that business does have to be done a little bit differently than it has been in the past. However, one of the things that has not sat well with me as far as this particular project has been concerned is the fact that they intend to start out with yet another parking lot, where there are already two parking lots. And apparently, from what I can understand, is that part of the financing for the other projects will be made from the money that is made off the parking lot. What I do not want to see is the parking lot come, and then it doesn't go any further from there. You know, we're in close proximity to DIA. I know that the other two parking lots do well there because of their location, and this is what I do not want to see. If they were coming in and saying, okay, we're going to do a hotel and the parking lot at the same time so that the people who stay at the hotel can utilize the parking lot and shuttle services and whatnot, I would think that that would be great. But the fact that we once again hit started with a parking lot, and then now it sounds like we have another 10 years that the developers have to develop this, then I don't want to see the doors open to other developers where they think that this is how we do business here. And that's my comment. I would have rathered them come up and ask for the 10 years to begin with rather than to come up now with it after the fact. And I guess that's the way it had to be done because of certain guidelines or whatever. But, you know, I wanted to bring this before you on a second reading, and I was really discouraged in doing that. So I'm just here to speak my piece. I just want you to think about the future of Commerce City and what potential we have here. But I want you to be encouraged to do business the right way and to negotiate with some foresight. Thank you.
Hang on, we might have some questions. I know I do, I have a couple comments. Councilmember Benson?
This isn't a question for Ms. Douglas, but is there anything between two years and 10 years? Has somebody already asked that question? I don't know. Why do we have to go from two years all the way up to 10 years? Why not four years, five years, something in between? 10 years does seem like an awfully long time.
Why can't we go to two years and then if things at that point aren't going the way they're supposed to, to reevaluate it at that time? I just hate to see this set in stone where it's 10 years and then, you know, we have nothing to work with from our side because we already said yes.
Mr. Gaylor, is it proper for us to do something between two years and 10 years?
Well, the application is for 10 years, so-
Do we have to do that or nothing at all?
The applicant would have to agree to any amendment to the application. I might just add, if I may, Mr. Mayor-
You may.
-part of this discussion is that, and Mrs. White did allude to it, and that is, is that in order to market the property, whether it's this parcel or another parcel, an investor needs to know that he's got some time in order to get the development in place. So in order for this owner to be able to sell a piece of property to an investor, the investor needs to know that he's got some time to put together a plan for the development. And as has been indicated, that two years is not enough time to accomplish that in this economy. And that's really the crux of this whole discussion before the city council. Otherwise, I don't think staff would be asking or recommending that this application be approved. But because of the problems that occur with this type of development and the investment that goes along with it, they're saying they need more than two years to accomplish that.
You know, I agree that two years is probably too short a period of time, but I'd like to ask the applicant if they can live with something less than 10 years. 10 years is an awfully long time.
It is a long time.
Two years is a very short time. It seems like there ought to be some in-between ground that we might be able to agree on because I, 10 years, I'm not even going to be here. I'd like to live to see something happen on that property.
That's all right.
Can we hear from the applicant about that?
You know what? I'll call the applicant up as soon as we're done with the citizen. Mr. Macaldonie?
I was going to make a similar comment to that of Mr., the city attorney on the development or investment for the development angle, and I think that's one that we need to consider. I don't think that the applicant, and we'll look for the applicant's response on this, would come forward and ask for the 10 years if it weren't a factor being driven by the investment in this property. The fact is, we've got a significant and complex development that will take place over many years. That was made quite clear during the application process and when we made the decision to approve zoning on this property. The other piece of clarification I would just ask for the applicant to speak to when they come up is about the proposed or the anticipated order of development, because I don't recall the parking being deemed Project 1. I believe there was a retail component.
Hotel Convention Center is what I remember being, uh, their private.
And so if we can just have a refresher on what those, the anticipated staging was of those projects, that might also help. And I guess on the investment perspective, just, again, if I think about sort of the basics of business, you want a predictable environment. And if I- of business, you want a predictable environment, and if I can't plan beyond a certain timeframe and I'm potentially investing a significant amount of money, it's less likely that I'm going to be willing to put that money at risk. So I can't speak to it. That's not in my piggy bank, the realm of my piggy bank, to make investments of that nature, but if we could have the applicant speak to that, that would be great.
I will, as soon as we're done with the citizen, we'll ask the applicant forward. While we're on this topic, can the staff please put up the map that shows the parcels so that everybody in the audience understands what we're talking about? Do you have the colored one over there?
No, actually, I just have this one here tonight.
I have part of my comment, let me go through the rest of it. Mr. Bullock, and then I'll get to my comments.
My comment piggybacked on Mr. Mackel Downey's, that during the presentation for this, during the zoning, I was led to understand that a retail commercial hotel site was going to be one of the first sites to be developed, and I never heard in there that parking was going to be the first site, and I want to get an understanding on this, where this came from.
When I call the applicant back forward, we can take the questions for the applicant. I want to finish with the citizen first, please. Seeing no one else, I'll give you just some of my comments. Part of my discussion with Mayor Hancock along this corridor is because this is an airport-related project, it fits into the Aratropolis program, this kind of a project is already helping us to get an on-ramp for Pinia from southbound Tower, which is an important piece to this council.
Absolutely.
As well as that, there's still an airport agreement in place that requires the development along Pinia to be airport-related businesses. No non-airport-related businesses can access Pinia. That's why we don't have the on-ramp. So part of my pitch to the mayor to get our on-ramp is in fact that we do have those parking lots, they are airport-related, and with this 200-acre development, it puts us in a better position to try to, in a timely manner, get that on-ramp. So there are some key pieces to this. I agree, if we could stage it out, if we knew what that staging was, but I know that the vesting period is important for them on their financing to get the pieces in place.
And I understand that as well, but from what I've also heard on the E-470 is that the money's there, the talks have to be initiated with the FAA and the city of Denver, and those things are already in place, the money's there. We just need to really push on moving forward with that.
Absolutely.
We have two representatives here who sit on the E-470 board, one is a regular and the other is an alternate, and those talks have been initiated. So I would like to see things move along, and yes, we do have two parking lots there right now. Do we need a third, and do we need that parking lot to be there for 10 years and have that stretch of time pass before something else comes along with the parking lot?
No, I think we need multiple development in the area. If there's a need for another parking lot and it's part of this development plan that we approved, then the council agrees that that component can be within that.
Yes, and it is.
However, I want to let you know that my discussions with the mayor of Denver were that we are building airport-related businesses. We have a development plan for additional airport-related businesses, and as part of that, he told me, yes, E-470 has the money to pay for the on-ramp, Denver's okay with us building the on-ramp, it's being held up with the FAA or DIA, one of the two, and he said he would look into it and try to get it moved forward.
And that's correct.
We sent, after that conversation, he wanted this development plan that we approved because it helps him with his piece because of the original airport agreement. And with that being said, I think we're in better shape to move forward to get those accesses that we need for our northern part of our community, where you and I both live up north.
Right.
And as well as that, there's components in here where we just met with the folks that are looking at the light rail station, and I pushed, or Councilman Bullock was with me, I pushed for improvements along Tower. So I'm trying to find ways, and these type of developments along here that are airport-related fall within the Aratropolis, will help us try to get funds to develop the widening of Tower Road. So it's all part of the big picture.
Exactly, and I understand that. I just want you to understand what my concerns are.
I do very well.
And I sat through the first presentation, and that was one of the things that caught my attention.
Sure.
And so I did speak to the planning department about it, and what I thought was right, I was, it was explained to me that I was right in catching that. So I want to bring that forward to you.
And you definitely were, and I'm glad that you came forward today. I'm glad that they got this up here so that all the residents can see the multiple development plans, the different parcels, and we appreciate you coming forward and speaking on, and I don't know if you're for or against, or if that's information only, you never stated that, but...
No, I'm absolutely for this. I'm very excited about it.
Yeah.
I just don't want to be stagnant with a third parking lot there for 10 years.
And neither do we, and we're going to talk to the applicant, and I know the applicant will get those questions in just a few minutes.
Very good. Thank you so much. So can I, like, sit down?
Absolutely. We're done, thank you.
Thank you.
Can the applicant please come forward again? Mr. Benson?
Yeah, I guess my question was, could the applicant live with something less than 10 years? Because, you know, say we do something for five years, if the owners come to us and say, "We've got a deal in the works, we need another year or two." I mean, I don't think this council is going to refuse that. I'd just hate to tie that property up for 10, a decade, saying, "You've got this long to do something here." It seems to me like some lesser amount of time would be sufficient, given the fact that we're not going to deny somebody the right to have an extension of that if they've got something that they're working on. If there's nothing going on after five years, I think maybe we might decide, well, we need to let somebody else have a chance to do this. But I'm quite aware of what the economic situation is, but somebody's made the decision that there's going to be, that they're going to develop this property, I would just make, could the applicant live with something less than 10 years?
Mayor, Councilman, before I answer, if I may, let me just clarify what it is that we're asking for here, because I know there was a lot of discussion and a lot of concern about the potential for a parking use that could be allowed on partial three, planning area three on that map up there. That is presently allowed in the zoning that you already approved in December, that's not changing with this. Along with that, because of the concern along the lines of the issue that was raised by the citizen that just testified of the city wanting to make sure that you don't end up with a parking lot and only a parking lot there, you also approved a development agreement that contains both a carrot and a stick to both penalize the developer if there is only parking there for some period of time, and reward the developer for moving forward with other associated development on the other planning areas such as a hotel and the retail center like was discussed. So right now, in the zoning that was approved, any one of these areas could go first. We could come in with planning area one, or seven, or three, parking could be first or it could be last, but parking cannot go forward without triggering the things you approved in the development agreement. The penalty for additional fees on that parking use if other uses don't come forward at the same time, and then the incentive reward that if other uses do come forward at the same time, a partial rebate of the use taxes associated with those uses will be rewarded back to the developer of those uses. So I just want to clarify that. So what we're asking with the 10 years is just insurance, that you're not going to change your mind about this zoning plan that you already approved. Technically, a city could come back a couple of years later if we haven't acquired a vested right by commencing development, city could come back and legislatively, on its own motion, without any application from us, change the zoning. And if you grant us the vested right, you can't do that. You're saying, "We guarantee that the approvals we gave you stay in place for 10 years." And the reason we think 10 years is the right number and the appropriate number is because we're talking about 200 acres, nine different planning areas, a wide variety of associated and affiliated uses, and I assure you, in the development world that I'm working in, 10 years is not a long time at all. I just am involved in another project in a mountain community where we're asking for 20 years vested rights, and in order to demonstrate that request to that council, I collected, oh, maybe 15 or 17 development agreements, all approved within the last 12 months, that had at least 15 or more years of vested rights granted, and many of them were much smaller than this. So we asked for 10 years because we think it's the right number, we think it's what it takes to demonstrate that this approval is in place and that the city's not going to change its mind and take it away later, and we think it's what we need to go out to the investment community and the tenant community and the development community and get the kind of quality developers that you all want to see here when you approve the package that you approved.
You understand that, what that off-ramp from Tower onto Pinia does to the value of your property?
Yes, sir.
All right. Because right now, you know, there are two, there are two parking lots over there, but you have to go all the way down to 56th Avenue to get onto Pinia. I think three parking lots could survive up there if that off-ramp was built, but right now, I don't think so.
Understood.
So we would need a lot of help from the owners. In fact, I have asked our staff to contact both Canopy and USA to see if they can get them to pitch in something to help us build that off-ramp. So, but anyway, I just, 10 years does seem like an awful long time to me for something that's this close to DIA and that is highly developable, and it seems like somebody ought to be able to get something done, get something started, get some kind of a commitment. Maybe you get a contract that has as a condition that we increase the vesting rights to 10 years. It's a condition of the contract. That way, we could undertake the change at that time. But I'm just having a problem with 10 years myself. Thank you.
Is there any other comments or questions for the applicant from the council? Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, I also agree, 10 years is a long time because I, coming forward with this and for the council's approval and all, you guys are in there. So as far as having invested, we're invested in this as well. We have a stake in this as well. We want to see you succeed, but to put something out there for 10 years, that's just kind of, to me, that's just, that's just too long because I think things are going to move a lot sooner as far as investments, as far as property being filled up, as far as having, looking at hotels coming in and all that. They're really going to look at the area there because it's, there's going to be, you know, not saying the on-ramp's going to be here soon, but when it does come in, it's going to give your land more value than going south into Denver, and then with our incentives that are in place, it's going to help whoever you bring in. So I would look at, I would like to see more for four-year situations instead of 10. And like I said, we have a vested in this property as well. We want to see you succeed, and I couldn't see the zoning changing at all. So I, having heard that, I mean, that wasn't even brought up when the applicant was going forward with this. So zoning, to me, at that time and now, to me, is really not an issue. Thanks.
Councilman Mackel Downey?
I'm prepared to make a motion, sir.
Not quite to the point of a motion yet. I see no other questions for the applicant, thank you.
Mayor, may I respond to that last comment?
To the comment? Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, Councilman, I hope you're right, and I hope it develops significantly faster than 10 years. And if you approve a vested right of 10 years, it certainly wouldn't prevent or hinder that. It would only help it to develop faster.
Okay. Before you sit down, one of the questions that I've been hearing up here is, what are your intentions? I know it's market-driven, but what portion of this development do you and the client feel that will happen first or that you're pursuing first or you'd like to see happen first?
If I may, Mayor, I do think that the developer is probably better situated to answer that question than me.
Can you please come forward and state your name and address for the record?
Chris Thompson, 5753 Shasta Circle, Littleton.
You can see some of the concerns up here, and maybe you can shed some light on what you, your intent is from a development standpoint of moving forward on these parcels.
Sure. So obviously, my intent as a developer is to develop, you know, as quickly as we can with the right mix of tenants and the right quality of tenants so that you have, you add value to the property so that the next parcel will be maybe even a nicer user or, you know, you can charge more money for it. So the intent initially is on PA 9, the market there for hotels, restaurants, services is the strongest right now, and that's what I personally see as happening first. The utilities are also there, so the cost of building is less expensive there. The parking parcel, we can't actually build on that until middle of summer is when you could first get a building permit, and then we have the other restrictions with the development agreement of when that could actually open. And then actually, on PA 4, we made a proposal this week through the Economic Development Committee, Commission for Commerce City for a 25 to 35-acre larger user, so we are actively promoting that property as soon as we can. It's, that market isn't quite as robust, but I would love to get somebody on PA 4. We proposed PA 1 and PA 5, excuse me, PA 3, PA 4, and PA 1 to this user also. If they were interested, they could even go where the parking is on PA 3. So we're actively marketing everything. It's a whole mix of different uses. You don't necessarily know which one is going to go first, but you want to be sure that the first one that goes in there doesn't spoil it for everything else.
Okay. Is there any other questions for the developer? Seeing none, thank you.
Thanks.
Now, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information only? May I just state your name and address again, Kristi?
Kristi Douglas, 10970 Unity Parkway, Commerce City, Colorado. I would just say, or I would like to point out, that the answer that the developer just gave was not very definitive, and it does sound like the parking lot is going to go in next summer, and who knows what will happen after that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Mr. Attorney, you have a comment?
I think that a statement needs to be made for clarification of the benefit of the council here. What we're talking about with vested rights means that the city will not change any agreement that we've already made with regard to this property. So the zoning is in place, and what we're saying is, if the vested rights application is granted, we will not change the zoning for at least 10 years. I don't know if that's clear to everybody. It also means that we will not change the development agreement, or attempt to change the development agreement. There would be a problem changing an agreement without consent of both parties, but as an example, you, as a city consul, are agreeing that if you grant vested rights, you will not change what you've already granted for at least 10 years. Now, one thing, when this vested rights statute was first passed, the concern was, is that you have a government, a city or a county, that had adopted a land development code or comprehensive plan years ago, and now you run the risk of you as a developer of a change coming about within two years, or five years, or 10 years, whatever. In our case, the city, we just went through a land development code. We just adopted our design standards. We just adopted a comp plan. So we're not in a position that we would want to change something that we've just adopted. It's not that old. So when you grant vested rights, it means that you will not change it for at least this number of years. I just want to clarify that because I get the impression that we're talking about if this development doesn't take place, within a certain number of years, something goes away. The zoning is there, it's going to stay there unless we, as a city, come in and affirmatively change that zoning, and the vested rights guarantees that the zoning will not be changed. And right now, the staff certainly has no intent of bringing to you a change of zoning that you just granted.
Thank you, Bob. Sorry for keeping you waiting, Mr. Serna. Will you please state your name and address for the record?
14122 East 200 and 2nd Place, Commerce City, Colorado. Don't be gun-shy with what happened on Quebec. 20 years net, and I know it's only been about 13 or 14 years, but we're still waiting for that property to be developed. And this is a billionaire. And we took a chance because of the billions of dollars that these investors had or the hope that they had to build right there at the arsenal. This is a smaller company that's willing to invest in our community and it's cutting it from 20 to 10. They're saying, we're taking a risk. Take a risk along with us. That the ramp is not being built, that's not their fault. That's Commerce City's fault for not holding Denver to building that ramp the way it should be. That it's going to bring more traffic on Tower Road, yes, it is. But it also brings more opportunity in that area to get it done faster. I think that you have to look at the whole picture of what's coming for this city. The more rules and regulations, and if you're not willing to take a risk, it ain't going to come. Those are the things that you have to keep in mind. Yes, the community is going to complain, but you have more information in your heads than we will ever have. And I think that these are opportunities that, that parking place could probably be something else in 10 years if the economy goes in the right direction. Give them the opportunity to do something. If you could take, let's say, the time to give to Cronky to build that 900 and some acres and not get anything done with it, why can't you give a smaller company the opportunity that's willing to work hard? And I think they will work a lot harder than Cronky does to get this done. They're just saying, hey, somewhere along the line there was a mistake made. Give us the opportunity to straighten it out and let us move on. That's all I have to say. And I'm in favor. I think it's something that has to happen.
Okay. Is there any comments for the citizen? Seeing, here's one. Councilwoman Carson?
Thank you, Senator. Thank you. You made a lot of remarks that I thank you for, but the one I thank you for the most is pointing out we all have a lot of information in our head. I think sometimes citizens don't think that we do have that information there, but thank you. No, I agree with you.
Thank you.
That if they're willing to invest in our city, we should invest in them.
Seeing no one else, thank you, Mr. Serna. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak during this public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Now, I will entertain a motion concerning the Planning Commission findings and recommendations. Mr. McElhany?
We move to accept the Planning Commission's findings and recommendations for Z 896-12.
Okay. Councilman Moreno?
Second the motion.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now, I will entertain a motion on the ordinance. Mr. McElhany?
We move to approve ordinance Z 896-12.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second that motion?
A motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Title, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, title. Give me the title.
Title reads, "Ordinance Z-896-12, an ordinance approving the vested rights development agreement establishing vested property rights in the DIA Tech Center located at the northwest corner of East 81st Avenue and Tower Road, City of Commerce City, Colorado."
I'll now ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that the motion is approved unanimously. And we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is also a public hearing, Z Staff, please come forward to make the presentation. The public hearing is now open.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it is a pleasure to be before you again. Again, my name is Chris Kramer, planning manager here at Commerce City. I know we have a full agenda, so I will attempt to be brief of the case. It's Z 456-87-12. It's a property located at the southeast corner of 104th Avenue and Havana Street. The applicant in this case is actually the City of Commerce City and the request is to remove zoning conditions that are present on three different parcels. Just as a little bit of context about the parcels in question, they are just south of 104th, the Havana alignment, and 1, 2, 3 parcels are the ones that we are here talking about tonight. The comprehensive plan does designate this as office warehouse, so it's not quite the light industrial. It is, the First Creek floodplain is directly to the south and it has I-1 zoning. You can see the comprehensive plan designation of the office warehouse. There are three parcels that are included in this request that the city is bringing before you. And these parcels may be familiar because the parcel in the middle is where Cummins, Rocky Mountain recently constructed their facility, which you can see in this picture. The other two lots are vacant. The reason we are here is that in 1987, when the case was zoned, it was zoned I-1 with conditions that, there's five of them, we'll get to them shortly, but in essence, required that, because they had no specific developer at that time and it was what was called a speculative zoning, all approvals, in essence, needed to come before city council. It was a way that council at the time saw as a protection against, you know, possibly questionable development. As a result of that condition, in 2010, Cummins had signed a contract to build in the middle parcel and so they therefore came before city council for both their development plan and their subdivision plat, which divided the land into three different parcels. I will summarize these five conditions. There are a lot of words on the screen. I will not read those for the benefit of everyone. But the first condition, basically, I mentioned this earlier, any permit requires city council approval. Staff is recommending that this condition be removed. It is a different time and place than 1987. We have an updated land development code, comprehensive plan, the development plan process is now in place. So, there are protections for the city that weren't present in 1987. The second condition basically requires that that first condition be recorded at the county and so if we eliminate the first condition, the second condition is no longer needed. The third condition basically says that a public improvement agreement, at the time what was called development agreement, must be signed to address the adjacent right-of-way. That was done and so it's therefore no longer necessary. The fourth condition basically says that the existing residences that were in place in 1987 shall be authorized to continue. Those, they're no longer there, so it's a vestigial condition that's no longer needed. And the fifth condition relates to those same residences that are no longer there. So, both D and E are no longer needed. The Planning Commission analysis of this case, removal of these conditions will make the properties easier to sell and develop. It will streamline their process, telling prospective developments that they need to go to city council for a series of approvals, which could take anywhere from four to six months, can sometimes have a chilling effect on potential development. There is the middle lot where Cummins already has built and the removal of this condition on their specific lot where they've already built will allow their existing site to continue to stay up-to-date and state-of-the-art through administrative approvals. The processes and standards that we have in place through the land development code and comprehensive plan provide adequate protection. And then obviously, the other third, 3 through 5th conditions are no longer necessary. So, January 18th, Planning Commission took testimony and voted 5-0 to forward this request to city council with a favorable recommendation. So, council, I'm sorry, staff is available for any questions that the council may have.
Are there any questions of the staff from the council? Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Kramer, I understand the difficult administrative burden, obviously, for any building permits to have to go through both the Planning Commission and the city council. The other segments of that condition, though, seem appropriate for any subdivisions or for any site improvements or change in use. Is it that we now have the administrative processes in place where those go through that process anyway and those no longer need to be there? Is that the reason for it?
Yeah. If this were a straight-zoned property that didn't have these conditions on top of it and somebody wanted to come in and develop a vacant piece of property, there are a number of processes that they would have to go through with the city. And if the use itself was a use by right, they would have to go through all of these processes administratively through development plans, subdivisions, anything like that, right? So, those processes are already in place. These conditions change that. These conditions basically said that you have to go to city council and you have to approve those processes. In 1987, we did not have the development plan process that we have now. We refer that out to a variety of boards and bodies, all the utilities, you know, through our development review team, which includes members of our Public Works Department parks, the water district. So, frankly, we're much more equipped to administratively handle these and produce a quality development that maybe in 1987, we weren't equipped to do.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify in favor of, in opposition to, or for information only concerning this hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Now, I'm ready to accept a motion concerning the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. Mr. McElhany?
Would move to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on Z 456-87-12.
Okay. Councilman Moreno?
Second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Okay. All those in favor of signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I will now entertain a motion on the ordinance. Mr. Benson?
Yes, move for the adoption of ordinance Z-456-87-12.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second that.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Title, Mr. Mayor?
Title?
Title reads, "Ordinance Z-456-87-12, an ordinance amending ordinance Z-456-87 by deleting all zoning conditions for the properties described in Exhibit A attached hereto and made a part hereof and located at the southeast corner of 104th Avenue and Havana Street, Commerce City, Colorado."
Thanks, Bob. Sorry I keep skipping over you. Can we now have a roll call vote, please? Motion is carried unanimously. The vote is 9-0. Now, next item on the agenda, since we moved and changed and had the executive session put into place, I will now allow the comment period for fracking to occur. First person I will call forward is Michael Scanlon. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michael Scanlon. I live at 10635 Nucleus Street. And real quick, before I begin, I want to start with a moment of levity here. I noticed that the good councilman Jim Benson got a nice big cake. I don't know how much, how well y'all can see back here. This good fellow right over here got a little cupcake. Come on, y'all. We know staff work harder than the council with all due respect.
He's going to get a heart of that. He'll get a heart of that.
My cake is of the property of the citizens of Commerce City. It can be split that number way.
Well stated. And if I may digress one more moment to be serious, I want y'all to know that I am in complete support of removing the title interim from our city manager's title. I'm fully in support of having a city manager from Commerce City and I think you got the right candidate for the job right over here, Brian McBroom. I wanted to take a minute to say, as someone who lives in reunion, and I believe I would, the term is, I have legal standing regarding the fracking operation in consideration, that I am fully in support of having a moratorium and taking our time to think this thing through. I know there are a number of concerns that a lot of us have over there and everybody wants to come back to the water. I'm concerned about the water, too. There's a lot of concerns beyond the water. We're looking at toxic chemicals being trucked down our highways. We're looking at the possibility of earthquakes. Now, I know this is an industry that regularly says, and I don't mean to demean anyone. I know the folks that work in this industry are good people, you know, and I believe I'm a very reasonable guy. We need to have jobs. I understand that. I like to burn natural gas in my furnace as much as anybody. But we're talking about an industry that says, and they're on record as saying this, is you can put as much pollution in the air as you want and it will have no effect at all. We know that's not true. They say that now that the fracking doesn't cause earthquakes. That's been proven not to be true as well, that there are tests they can do to determine whether or not the ground is going to move when they come in and frac the ground. There are a number of concerns like this. I have only touched on a couple of the big ones, that I would, that I stand here in favor of taking a moratorium, taking the time like so many other localities have done, like the state of New Jersey has done, to think this thing through, make sure we do it right. Personally, I don't think it should be done near homes. I'm not opposed to doing it out in the open areas, but I have a lot of concerns about doing it in our neighborhoods and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, thanks, Michael, for appearing here tonight. In your opinion, would it be better to have a voluntary moratorium or to have a moratorium that is an ordinance in this city?
I think the city took the right approach by trying to bring all parties together and work through this in a constructive manner. So, obviously, a voluntary is much better.
Right. Okay. And I have a few more questions. Do you, you know, I've read a lot of articles and I've heard about earthquakes and tremors, but I haven't read one yet that says that the fracking operation itself has caused earthquakes. I've read where dumping the fracking fluid down an injection disposal well has caused earthquakes, but where the fracking operation itself, I haven't seen anything that says that that causes earthquake. It's always the disposal well. Do you have an article that you might refer me to?
Yeah, I've got, we're over my pay grade on this as well. I'm not a geophysicist or whatever the term is for one who studies earthquakes. But my understanding is it was first determined that man could cause earthquakes in South Africa in the 60s when they were doing some deep mining. You know, they were blowing up things down there and it was causing, you know, earthquakes aren't a black or white thing. They measure them on the Richter scale and, you know, a 3.2 might be just a small trembler, but you're shifting the ground. I have some material that I've found on that that I'd be happy to get to you.
Yeah, if you could do that, because I just, I haven't seen, you know, I've read the Ohio stuff, Oklahoma, Arkansas, Pennsylvania, and it's always the injection disposal well in that proximity where the earthquakes or the tremors are occurring. And I haven't, I just haven't found anything, but if you could send me something like that because I thought when we had our, when we had our meeting back on January the 10th, that I think the whole panel was in agreement that you don't, that you don't get earthquakes or tremors at the site of the fracking itself. But I don't know. I'd like to see what you, what you have on that. Do you know how many other cities are working with the industry, negotiating with the industry the way that we are?
No, I don't. I wish I knew more about that.
I'm just wondering, Mr. Gaylor, do you have any idea?
I don't have an exact number, but I know that Erie, Longmont, Colorado Springs, and several counties are also. So, I would say there are at least five and somewhere five to 10 that are engaged in these type of discussions.
Yeah, okay. Good. Thank you.
Nice work.
Okay. Seeing no other comments or questions, thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you very much, y'all. Thanks.
Next, I'll call Mr. Tim Knight.
Thank you. I'll make a brief. Thank you.
I need your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Tim Knight, 9758 Laredo Street, Commerce City, Colorado, 80022.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak real quick and urge the- I just wanted to speak real quick and urge the council to vote in favor of 1880, the moratorium. Give us time to look at what the issues are and allow the citizens to digest it. I know oil and gas is important. We all use it, just like you said, I use it. But I live right across from where they're gonna drill. It's gonna affect me. It's gonna affect everybody. I don't know what it's gonna do to my property values. The economy is kinda bad. I've lost a lot of money on my house. So that's all I got to say.
Is there any comments or questions for Mr. Knight? Seeing none, thank you for coming in this evening. Next, I will call Kathy McIntyre. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kathy McIntyre. My address is 17503 East 104th Way. I am in favor of a yes vote on ordinance 1880. The vote you make tonight will become part of your legacy. It was set at the end of the Oil and Gas Land Use Review Committee that the rush to attempt to understand the 70-year history of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal in a few, 30 short days was due to avoiding litigation with the oil and gas industry. There is not a person here tonight that is not operating in complete darkness on this issue. It took $2.4 billion and 20 years to transform the arsenal into the refuge, and it must not be disturbed. It took 20 years for the greatest scientists in the world to remediate this, so why are we risking doing that again? We don't know, we do not want to be dependent on other countries for our energy, but anyone who says with assurance that fracking by our world-class wildlife refuge would cause no harm is simply being arrogant. Did we not learn from prior history? If you do not allow us six real months to learn from people that we, the citizens, trust and not the oil and gas industry, then if the disaster happens, your own citizens will remember who rushed into a very poorly researched decision. The Army's injection well at the arsenal caused earthquakes. Fracking a well is an injection well with high volumes of water, sand, chemicals, and pressure. There is no difference between a waste injection well, a fracked injection well, or the injection wells that the Army originally did at the arsenal. Should earthquakes disturb the arsenal, our world-class refuge, which has home to over 330 species of animals, would be devastated. Who would pay for the second remediation? Would the Army pay for another remediation, or would the oil and gas industry pay for the remediation? Maybe we should answer that question first before we move forward with fracking on property so close to the arsenal. Our city and our refuge are unique to anyplace else in the rest of the world. Thank you.
Is there any questions from the council for Ms. McIntyre? Seeing none, thank you for coming. Oh, yes, Mr. Benson?
You know, my, my button is still pushed.
All right. Yeah, I see it up here. Go ahead.
Are you comparing the fracking of a well to what the arsenal did for a period of about 30 years? I mean...
They didn't, they didn't do injection wells for 30 years. No. They only did it for a very short amount of time.
Well, they did it in the early sixties, and there were some tremors or earthquakes, and they stopped completely in 66.
That's correct.
About 40, 48 years ago. I guess if my math is correct, but I've gotta tell you, there's no comparison to what's, what goes down a well for fracking and what went down that hole at the arsenal.
Yes.
It's like the difference between night and day. It's a factor of maybe a million.
It, it's not the quantity. The quantity that went down the well, the injection well at the arsenal, was done over a period of four years. It's the quantity during a certain day.
Not 20 years.
Four years.
Four years.
Four years, yes. It's the pressure, and those caused earthquakes.
And they were put down at a lot more pressure than I understand that fracking has, but you know, I'm as concerned about our water and the refuge as anybody else is, but I'm just trying to, as a matter of fact, next month or perhaps in March, I'm going to put together another panel to talk about the possible effects given our proximity to the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge. We're gonna have three people representing like Tri-County Health, the Army, and the Fish and Wildlife Administration in addition to an environmentalist, talk about that. But what I heard at the last panel was that there is a difference between what happens at a fracking site and what happens at an injection well disposal site. Huge difference because of the huge difference in the volume of liquid and stuff that's going down that hole.
Well, that...
And if anything is, and I'd like to hear from Mr. Scanlon, he's gonna send me some documentation, I think. I'd like to see where the fracking of a well has caused earthquakes or tremors and maybe how deep that well was. Because this well that we're talking about, which of course is not in the city of Commerce City, over which we will have no control regardless of whether a six-month moratorium, a year moratorium, or a 20-year moratorium is enacted, we will have no control over what happens to that well because it's in Adams County. So nothing that happens here tonight or any other night unless we annex that property is gonna have any effect on that particular well. But it's all down at 7,000 feet. And I'd like to, Mr. Scanlon, if you can, maybe the stuff that you send me, you can give me the depth of those wells that we were talking about that were being fracked because they're well below the water table, which is at about 400 feet. That's where our, the Adams County, South Adams County Water and Sanitation District wells are at about 400 feet. But I just, there's so much misinformation out here, and what I've tried to do with these panels is to get some experts to talk to people and say, this is what we believe, and it's only opinion. Even experts can only give an opinion. But I would tend to rely on the opinion of those people that I think are experts in their area of expertise, and I think that those people were. And I think that, I just don't think that they think this is the emergency that some people seem to think that it is. And I just tend to agree with those people because I respect their knowledge in the area.
Could you have a seismologist from either the School of Mines or the University of Colorado attend that panel as well?
I'm sorry, what?
Would it be possible to have a seismologist from either the Colorado School of Mines or the University of Colorado there as well?
I can, I can look into that, but the question for this next panel, as I have formulated it, is that what effect will this fracking have on the Rocky Mountain Arsenal in our proximity to it? How's that gonna affect our drinking water, quality of life? What effect is it gonna have on human life, wildlife, or whatever? That's gonna be the subject of the next panel because I think that's what most people are worried about, is our proximity to the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge. And everybody wants to protect that. $20 billion has been spent out there, and we don't wanna have to spend another $20 billion, but we've been given a lot of information about how the plumes have moved to the northwest, that there's really nothing there supposedly under the ground. We're not going under the arsenal anyway. Nobody can because it's federal property, and I don't believe that they're gonna give their permission to anybody to do any drilling or fracking underneath the refuge. So I don't think we have to worry about somebody drilling under the refuge. It would be illegal. If somebody found out about it, they could stop them. Let me ask you another question. What, what effect, what would happen if we voted to enact a six-month moratorium and then a week later, somebody from the industry decided to frac within the city of Commerce City? What would happen then?
I don't know what the city would do. I, I have no idea.
Well, if we have an ordinance, it's up to the city to enforce that ordinance. We can't just say, well, we're gonna let it go.
I would hope, right. I would hope that you're...
And you heard the people at the last panel say that there are certain things that can and cannot be done by a municipality.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm saying to completely stop the fracking process is probably gonna be something that all those panelists stated was gonna be within the purview of state law, preempted by state law. I'm just wondering what effect, if any, a moratorium can have because we're just a city. And in addition, this, the well, again, that we're all talking about is not even in the city of Commerce City, so...
We're, we're actually talking about the second well that is in the city of Commerce City.
Right, okay.
That has a permit that's being held right now.
Is that the one that's a little bit south of the well that we're...
Correct. It's on the other side of Tower, and it's actually in the city limits.
Right, okay. But just think about, if we enact the moratorium, what happens if the driller, the operator, violates the moratorium? Where do we go from there?
I...
I'm not adverse to going to court. That's what I've been doing for 35 years, but nobody wins except the lawyers. And I know that because I am a lawyer. I love litigation, but that doesn't mean that that is what I want to see the city get engaged in, especially when I don't think that we have a great chance of prevailing, so...
Well, we would like to find out what the city can enact as far as roads or other types of ordinances.
Right, right. And that is what, that is what we're doing with these meetings with industry representatives and others. And I think that our attorney has gotten the, I don't know whether he's gotten the instruction or whatever from the council or from that, the people on the council on that committee, that we wanna push the state preemption envelope as far as we can. But if we push any further than that, we're gonna wind up losing unless the state legislature changes something. It's up to the state legislature to change state law. That's something that could have an effect on fracking.
Absolutely.
But this city can't do that, and I'm hoping that maybe we're gonna get somebody in the state legislature that will take a great interest in that. At least, that's my hope. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Just, Jim, Councilman Benson covered a lot of things I was gonna bring up. Clarification, Mrs. McIntyre's right, four years, we did pump the chemicals down into the deep well, it was four years. And there's also, there is three partials that can be drilled by law under the Rocky Mountain Arsenal. But beyond that, Jim was correcting a lot of things that I was gonna say. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Next, I will call Kristy Douglas. Please come forward and state your name and address.
Kristy Douglas, 10970 Unity Parkway, Commerce City, Colorado, 80022. I didn't really have anything prepared for tonight. I didn't think that I was going to be able to speak because I was told before on other things that citizens weren't allowed to make comments on second readings. I am very grateful and appreciative of the opportunity to do it, though, on this particular subject. I want to say just how disappointed I am in the way this has all been handled. I want to remind you that you are elected officials, and the people who elected you are your constituents. You swore an oath to serve and protect those constituents. I want to tell you that I was the person that sat at the desk at Jim Benson, Councilman Benson's meeting, and all of the comments from the people who were leaving were that they were furious because they were not allowed to ask questions. They felt like this was being shoved down their throats. They felt that they had lost their rights and that this was going to be done to them anyway, and that you would not have the backbone to pass a moratorium. I'm gonna read you something if I can. Couldn't find my glasses in my purse. I won't say who this is from, but it was from someone who attended that meeting. At our previous meeting, I attempted to express concerns about fracking in an area known to have hazardous chemicals underground and also known to have encountered small earthquakes when the arsenal pumped fluids underground. And I will tell you that today in the news, they are saying that fracking is causing some of the earthquakes in Ohio, and it's not just because of the disposal of the wastewater. And mind you, it's, it's shot underground under tremendous pressure, sand, water, mostly water, which we are, you know, we're in an area where water is a very, very precious commodity. We don't have it to throw away on something like this. Let me see if I can get back to where I was, but... All right. However, I left the meeting with the distinct impression that the state was going to do as they wished, dot, 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 until the consequences became disastrous enough to put us all at risk. So, tell me, why should I waste more time only to be frustrated with how little the bureaucracy cares about my humble concerns? Humble concerns? These are the people that you serve. These are the voices of the people that you serve. You're elected officials. Come on, think about this. Everybody's looking at Commerce City. What is Commerce City gonna do? What is Commerce City gonna do? Are they gonna be able to stand up for the rights of the citizens? You're the only ones who can answer that question. Thank you.
There's some comments, please. Hold on for a minute. Councilwoman Carson?
Ms. Douglas, I'm not sure where to start because I feel like I've spent the night with you coming to the podium telling us what a bad job we've done as council and that we don't understand anything. I also received the same email. I guess it's however you put an emphasis on words. I know who the email came from. I read the email. I can't say that my interpretation of what you read matched what you read. I do understand that I am elected.
Yes.
That does not mean that if I get a phone call from 20 people, I have to do what 20 people tell me to do.
Yes, I understand that.
It means that I have to do all the research and educate myself and reach out as far as I can to come to an opinion that I am comfortable with, that I will support. This has not been an easy thing for anyone sitting up here. Everybody up here is trying to do what is right. What is right is for an entire city, not just for a block, our ward, but we have to come to decisions that we feel is good for a city. Mr. Benson's question of what happens if you pass a moratorium and they, they go ahead and, and frac? What happens? Well, if you put the moratorium in, I guess that means that you're willing to go into litigation. That requires money coming from everyone within this city. I have to tell you, I have really tried to listen to everybody's concerns, fully agree that, that the concerns that you all have are concerns I have, try to be very empathetic, but we are also stewards of the entire city. We have to do what we feel is the absolute best and will serve all the citizens of this community the best. I also attended Mr. Benson's ward meeting. There was quite a few council members there. We milled around and we did talk to a lot of citizens there. I will have to tell you, I did not have one citizen speak to me the way you said they spoke to you at your table. I'm, can I finish?
Yes, ma'am.
They were all very grateful that that meeting had happened. They all felt that they were very well informed. No, I won't tell you that, that they all stood up and said, oh, we loved what we were told, but they were very happy to have people come and inform them with their educated opinions, such as Mr. Benson said. They understood, I think, much better, most of them, what this city can and cannot do, what is federal, what is state, what is city. I think they all understood that. I think some of them are very frustrated at thinking that they need to take this to the state. But I, I guess that I just don't like the idea that you're standing there thinking that none of us have the best interest of everyone who elected us. I have the best interest of everyone who voted against me also.
I understand that. I will say that... I understand that. Um, I will say that when I came up here a few weeks ago, and I was sitting in the audience, you also made some comments as well about things that you didn't understand. And I felt like the citizens were put under the gun at that point, so.
That's correct, but, but things have moved forward. Um, people are coming to a table together. People are willing to continue coming, investing time, investing effort to try to help this process along. There are certain things that have to continue to go on in order to make people continue feeling that that environment is one they want to invest in.
Invest in in what way?
Time and effort because, uh, I'm not sure who's making any money on the clock setting around that table and who's not pulling time away from their family, including our citizens. Um, it, I think that there's been a lot of time willingly put forward on the part of city staff, city council, oil and gas, citizens in our community to, to be there and, and to put a lot of time and effort into this. So, certain things, it, it, why would you shut the door as long as everybody's still willing to try to work together and give this information?
Because at this, at this point, all we've heard are the things that the oil and gas industry want to promote. And we haven't been able really to ask questions and get straight answers. And the people that, that left and talked to me said, I didn't.
Well, and that very well may be, but if they really were wanting the ear of somebody who has a vote in this, it would have been the council that were there. And, and I don't think any of the council, nobody said to me that they were approached that way. And, and we were there for a purpose. We wanted to hear, first of all, we're trying to go anywhere and possibly I, that I can so I can get the information that you're all getting because this has been something, this has been a quick study for all of us. But also, you try to reach as many people to, to understand where they're at, what it is that, that we can do, where we can help. Um, like I said, that was not what I walked out of that meeting with. I walked out of there with everybody that I spoke with. Uh, in fact, I, you can ask Mr. Benson. I told him he held one successful meeting because I said, they're a hundred percent happy. I did not have anybody.
I didn't get that at all, so. That's, you know, I, I just feel like they're coming here, they're coming into other communities. I, I don't know if you were there for the first part of the, the meeting, um, the last meeting, when the gentleman from Anadarko basically said, um, I really don't want to sit through this again. I've been through this with other communities. Everybody knows how this works. And, um, basically, he, he shrugged it off like it was no big deal. And, and that he didn't even have the time of day for.
Ms. Douglas, I've sat through lots of negotiations that I haven't appreciated what's been said at the table, but I continue to sit there and very glad that I did.
Ms. Carson, I really don't appreciate your, you, you said that I attacked the council. You know, I, I'm not here to debate with you, so, please.
Mr. Mayor, are we on point? I still have, yeah, you know what? It's, I was starting to get a little concerned, but we're on point right now, and I do have more questions for the citizen. Mr. Benson?
Thanks, Christie, for coming to give us your viewpoint on this. You know, as you know, I solicited written questions for about at least a week before that meeting. I asked every question that I could get to in our two-hour time slot, and we got a lot of questions answered. I wanted to avoid people getting into an argument by having discourse going back and forth between people in the audience and the panel. I asked during that meeting, as you'll recall, do you all like this format or do you want to see a debate next month?
Yes, but you asked for a debate, sir.
Well, and they said they'd rather have it just like it was that night.
Well, actually, I've talked to a lot of people who wouldn't like to be able to ask questions and get.
Well, they, they could ask those questions.
One second, please. I want to allow whoever has the floor at the time to finish speaking before the other interjects. And, and I think that's where we're kinda getting off, off base here. So, please, finish your questions, let Ms. Douglas
Sure.
answer them or vice versa.
Well, go ahead.
I'm off track. I can't even remember what.
You know, I, I wonder, I got one email, uh, about the format from, uh, a person who said that, well, I didn't think this panel represented Commerce City at all. And I had to tell her that there was only one person on that panel who did represent Commerce City, and that was our attorney, Mr. Barber. The rest of them were just there. They represented the COGCC. They represented, uh, Colorado Environmental Coalition. And we had, uh, Jim Jones from South Adams County Water. And we had, uh, an attorney named Barbara Green, who's been an environmental attorney for about twenty-five years. They don't, they didn't represent Commerce City. That's not why, why they were there. But I wonder where all of these complaints are. I was the one that called this meeting. I'm the elected representative from Ward Two. Why don't I get these complaints? I did get the, the email that you referred to. I got that today. I got that this morning. But that's the only one that I've gotten that has complained about that format. And everybody else has told me, as they told Ms. Carson, we really like this format. We got a lot of information. We can go home and digest this, maybe do some more research on our own. But it was good to hear from people who are experts in their field of knowledge. And that's what I'm gonna do the next time, only it's gonna be more related to the environmental impact and the impact on the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge, specifically directed to that, because that seems to be an issue with a lot of people that I have talked to. But I, I just, we're talking to two different sets of people, as far as I know, because I have heard none of this.
Okay, Ms. Douglas, would you like to respond?
Oh, I just said, I guess we are because that's not what people are saying to me. Their biggest complaint is that, that they're getting information from the oil and gas industry, um, the first night, that they came in protest and asked that you don't pass the moratorium. Um, the citizens were only allowed three minutes, but the people from the oil and gas industry, especially Mr. Nesslin, was allowed all the time he wanted. And, um, you know, I, I just feel like we're, we're getting one side of the story, and that is that, uh, this is safe, that, uh, it's, uh, will have no after effects, um, that it's good for the economy, and, um, it won't have any effect at all on the, uh, fact that we used to have an arsenal here, which is now a wildlife refuge. And, and I just don't think there's been enough, um, research to know whether that can happen or not. And, and, um, I think we need a timeout. We need, we need to show that we can be a community that bands together and, and can lead the way in this. And, you know, I, I, I just, I just want you all to understand that you represent us and you need to, to, uh, do what's right for the community. I, I, I don't think that industry belongs in residential neighborhoods. I don't think, it, it doesn't really work. We've already seen that. I mean, even at Suncor, did you know that the leak still exists at Suncor and they don't know where it's coming from? It's coming from deep underground. Did you know that we, that, that that's been happening for over a year, that the health department has been involved in it? It was contained on the, the, um, site, on the Suncor site? And then they tried to do things to, to stop it because it's deep under the ground. And, um, you know, um, the week that they fracked that first well in Adams County in, right behind South Lawn, all of a sudden, it shows up in, 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 uh, Sand Creek, and it is now in the platte. And it's forty-eight times the legal limit for, I think it's benzene or something. There's like three different long chemicals that I, I can't even pronounce. That have we taken the time to do the research to find out if there's some kind of correlation between the fact that that was fracked on that Sunday and then all of a sudden, oil shows up in Sand Creek? No, we haven't taken that time. Let's figure out what we're doing here. I've, I've got, I've got articles stacked this high. This is what I spend my time doing because I'm trying to see both sides. I don't want to see people lose their jobs or anything like that, but I don't want this economy to be based on something that, that's fly-by-night either. I saw the oil bust in the eighties here in Denver, and I saw what it did. I just think we need to take our time. They recently reinstated a, uh, another moratorium in South Africa because they, they're basing it on findings from all over the entire world. They want to step back. They want to take a look at what this is doing to their country.
I have more council members that want to ask you questions.
All right.
Mr. McAldonny?
And I appreciate the, uh, I appreciate your comments tonight, Ms. Douglas. I think the one thing that I want to piggyback on Ms. Carson's comments with regard to is the fact that there is a reason that we have committed the time and the energy to the discussions that are now underway. This topic terrifies many of us. My daughter, hearing about the concept, has a hard time even hearing the word. That's scary, right? It scares us all. And part of the scariness is that none of us are, by a day job, oil and gas experts. We can read articles in the newspaper of all persuasions. We can look at YouTube videos that show all facets of the issue from pro to con.
Yes.
I don't have myself a set perspective on what of that I need to ignore versus absorb. I'm still trying to learn. As Ms. Carson said, that's central to our function as your elected official. It, it is incumbent upon us to put ourselves as individuals in our back pocket temporarily and to consume as much information and as many perspectives as we can. And sometimes, that means talking to people we don't like too much. It means listening to things and digesting opinions.
Like me?
Digesting opinions that we don't necessarily personally align with. But we have to take those perspectives into account objectively. We have to take all of that, digest it, and come together. We have agreed as a council to undertake a process to start in that effort. We're three meetings in. We spend a lot of time trying to consume a lot of information in a little bit of time. There's, there's mountains that we could work to consume. I think the one thing that doesn't change with any of the research that I do or any of the opinions that we talk to, of any of the experts that we talk to, we cannot ban fracking outright tomorrow. So we have to put that out of head, out of mind, and know that that's not a near-term objective or possibility for us. What we can do are control any number of other factors, and we don't necessarily have. I can't tell you as an individual yet that I have a perfect sense of what all of those points are, that we can put on paper and deem defensible in, uh, in court, uh, in an effort to keep our citizens safe. So, part of what we're trying to do, central to what we're trying to do, is accomplish that. And so, in order to do that, it means that we need to hear the questions and the concerns that you and the community have. We need to raise those to industry. We need to get answers back. I have a frustration that we haven't gotten that big list of answers back yet. Three weeks plus in, and we don't, we don't have those back, and those are critical. The questions that were raised by Mr. Benson's, the attendees to Mr. Benson's, uh, meeting, we need those answers. We all need to digest those answers. We all need to get on the same page. If we hear something that we know is not necessarily true, we need to raise it up and get it to somebody who can answer it. So, I, I guess with that said, I am asking for a little bit of tolerance, a little bit of patience, a little bit of faith, a little bit of, uh, I don't know what other word to use, to allow this process to try and continue and allow us all to learn. We can't do that if we continue to stop and talk about how frightening this is. We know that. That's a given. But what we do need to do is be able to focus on and consume and reflect the information that we get so that we can actually move forward. We need to bring in more people to understand and fully vet our fears, whether that's geologists, seismologists, environmentalists. And the effort in front of us in our committee is to try and do just that. But we need to allow ourselves time to participate in those discussions without steering them off course. We need to use the limited time we have. You know, personally, I think I, I spend an average of five hours per Wednesday that we have those meetings. So that's a lot of time just on a day a week. That doesn't count all the other time that I spend on just this topic. And I know that's true for others on council. So, I hear you. I hear my neighbors. I take it deeply personally to put everything I have into understanding and bringing back facts and information that I can, with a clear conscience, say, we've made a good and right decision on behalf of this community. But I can't do that yet. I need to continue to, to do my homework. So, I would suggest that we all, uh, commit to doing that together. Um, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Douglas?
Thanks for, uh, coming forward, Christie. Um, I, you know, um, being on council here, uh, put into a lot of information. And, uh, I am frustrated myself, um, you know, hear, hearing things and all that, but I want to almost make things clear that, yes, we are elected official and we have to look at what it's like to be, uh, also on the, on the side of being a resident. And I was at Jim's meeting, and I, I can't really know. I sat up front because I had a long day that day. I was very tired. And I did pretty much, uh, tape, um, not the entire thing, but about at least fifty percent of it. I'm sorry, seventy-five percent of it. And, um, you know, there's a lot of factual information that was brought forward, um, by the experts. But, you know, when, when things are lined up the way they have by the industry and by certain folks coming in to speak, um, it holds a lot of weight. It sounds great. But then taking ownership of this is, people have to be more, uh, clear in understanding. And I think folks like the visual aspect of this, not like be told what's going on so they can go back and digest this and get a clear understanding of what's going on moving forward. And, um, so each time we've, we've had these meetings, um, brings up other discussions and other levels and other experts to come in. So, uh, you know, to me, as far as six months moratorium, um, I like the fact that six month moratorium is here. And, um, you know, as far as moving forward, yeah, there's a lot of, uh, legal things that we have to look, look at to, to put a, um, a good, clear answer on this. I have to say, you know, I, I do spend a lot of time with this. Um, I don't, I don't have a stress job, um, so I, I have spent a lot of time on this, um, more than I thought I would. And I, I did get a lot of displeasure from, from, from Jim's meeting, from, from citizens I didn't even know. Uh, we have a couple of folks up front here, uh, who came to voice their opinion. And I do a lot of listening. I don't do a lot of talking. Do a lot of listening to, uh, our, our community on this issue. Also listen to folks who are in this industry, who make their living, um, from, uh, from this industry. And, um, you know, I, I have to weigh in on, on how they receive their income and all. And, and that's a factor as well. But as a whole, I had to look at the whole city. And then, uh, by looking at this map here, the oil and gas, uh, gas activity, um, right now, the activity is mostly in the northern east area. It's not, we don't have anything to the south right now, nothing, uh, to the center of our city. It's not, we don't have anything to the south right now, nothing to the center of our city. I see a lot of plugged and abandoned wells, shut wells. There's one well waiting for completion. Well, actually, I'm sorry, there's two that I see on this map. There's actually five permitted wells, and there's a lot of producing wells. So, this is a huge subject. And I like to seek out the unknowns because they're, matter of fact, there is. I look at our air quality. We just had the state mandate the Cherokee plant and some other plants here in Colorado that burned coal to go over natural gas. So we had to not only deal with the fracking issue, but we also have 24-inch pipe coming down through our city. So we have a lot of things that we have to look at. And so, that's a lot of things to undertake. And just to have these three meetings right now, that's not enough time. I do believe we need a six-month moratorium. And because this issue, this is on a national level. Colorado Minnesota League, in June, they're going to, their talk's going to be the cutting edge issue on oil and gas, water, and the table. So everyone's got, everyone, as far as Colorado, is somehow part of this. Whether pro or con, it's an issue that we need to take hold and make sure we're doing the right thing. So when drilling happens in certain areas, we've done our homework and we're pretty much make sure our citizens are aware, they're safe, our water, all those issues are covered before we can push through, try to push through regulations on the city side. So, thank you.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't expecting to be up here this long and...
You need a chair.
No, I quit shaking, so, okay now. Yeah, I forgot about the 24-inch gas pipeline that's going to come through here as well. In some of this studying that I've done, you know, they're saying that it's more likely to have earthquakes occur where they already have occurred because the plates are, the stuff that they sent down there before actually caused lubrication. And so, you know, the likelihood of it happening again is right there. Do we want a 24-inch pipe cracking? And, you know, I just think there are so many variables. I do apologize for coming up here maybe a little bit more emotional than I should have. I do apologize for that. But, you know, I, this just kind of slid in our back door. All of a sudden, here it is. The new council comes on that Monday, they're sworn in, and then Friday, here we are. I was really hoping that the new council could move forward in wonderful ways and wonderful things. And here we are, trapped in this quagmire that no one was expecting. And that's part of the oil and gas industry that I just don't like. They kind of sneak in the back door and just expect you to live with whatever they have planned. And I kind of feel it's time for people to start standing up for their rights. That's all.
Okay. Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to go into great detail, but I am going to echo the comments made by council members Carson and McElhany. Understand that I'm elected official. I take that very seriously. I feel personally, we as a council acted quickly with limited resources in a short period of time to protect our citizens and ourselves, because we are citizens. And so for it to be said that maybe there's citizens out there that are disappointed in our actions, I feel is an unfair comment. Considering the outcome that we've had, we've got talks at the table with all parties involved, there's a lot of things that we're not happy with hearing, not in our favor. But in the same token, I think that we've done as best as we could with the limited amount of time, again, and the resources that we've been faced with. So I do take this very seriously. And I speak for myself, but also for all the other members on council, that we take this very seriously enough to put our best efforts, and as Jason had put it so wonderfully, that we put ourselves in our back pocket and we just, when we just get in there, we do the best that we can. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Kristi? I would like to thank you, first of all, for coming in. You don't have to apologize for anything. That's what this podium out here is for, is for citizens to come in and talk to us. I know you're frustrated, as there are many people that are frustrated. You mentioned you're elected officials, and we expect you to help us. You know what? I think this council is going above and beyond to try to get to the point of helping. I think with this panel of experts, with our citizens, with the council, with this land use commission, that we have the opportunity to get things from the oil and gas industry that otherwise we would not be able to get, like noise protection, air monitoring, impact fees on roads, fencing. I mean, I think there's a whole gamut of things that we can get that otherwise we may not be able to get. One of those may be being able to get community meetings with these panel of experts whenever a well's going to be fracked. I don't live up in Reunion in South Lawn, but I live over in River Run off 112th. There's an active well near my home, too. And so it's a concern for all of us. But when you say elected officials, I think everybody needs to realize that we have elected officials at several levels of government. Commerce City, we take care of our municipal stuff that legally we have the right to take care of. You have the state. We elect those people, too. Now, this issue, and why it's so touchy, is because we don't regulate this as a city. We can go ahead and do as much as we can to get as much safety for our residents as we can. At the end of the day, can we stop fracking? This is a state-regulated issue. We can get into a major lawsuit or a major battle with both the state and the industry. And we have all of the residents that we have to consider for their services and what their tax dollars may be paying for, that otherwise may have to go to a legal battle. So we're trying to balance this as a council to make sure that we can get as much as we can, but that at some point in time, the state is going to have to get involved. And this fight with all these communities over oil and gas needs to go to the state level. I mean, we have representatives that are elected, and that's what they're elected for. I think this council has very much stepped to the plate to do our job as elected officials. And we are going to continue to do as much as we can to keep our residents safe concerning fracking. I'm worried about a moratorium because I believe that if we enforce a moratorium at this time, that the people that we're working with, the experts and the oil and gas people, that we lose the opportunity to gain some of those impact fees and some of the gives that we may get to keep our residents safe that are within our jurisdictional rights as a community. If we cross that line and we get into a major lawsuit with the state or with the oil and gas industry, and we're not following our jurisdictional boundaries of what we have a right to do, we may end up not being covered by our insurance in a situation like that. And I don't know what this city, I don't know how big that could be and what this city could risk. So there are a lot of other factors besides, we do need to find out about earthquakes. We do need to find out about making sure of the arsenal. We need those things in place, but we also have to consider our jurisdictional boundaries and what us being elected officials allows us to do in the capacity of state law. So I have a lot of issues pertaining to the whole oil and gas thing myself. I want to get it all sorted out. I want to make sure our citizens are as safe as this council can make them. I want to make sure that you move on to the state level to make sure the state makes sure that our residents are as safe as possible. But we have legal boundaries that we have to look at as well. And so, I'm trying to digest all of it at one time. We went and hired an independent oil and gas attorney to help us. I know they brought in Charlie Sherman, and they brought in Ken Conrad. And out of two people, out of the entire arsenal cleanup project, those guys were there from the start to the finish, and there is no professional that knows more about that cleanup process. So we have the best people involved that we can get. And all I would ask is the same as Jason, that the residents bear with us for a while. We have more than just considerations of state suing us, the industry suing us. Yes, safety of the people is number one priority for us, but that moratorium may push people away, and the city may get less to be able to protect the residents over time. So we're trying to balance it, and it's moving forward in a good manner. And as long as we have a voluntary agreement with the oil and gas industry that we can have this moratorium move forward a month at a time, I think we need to be real careful as a council that we don't overstep our bounds legally with our jurisdictional boundaries with the state. So, we're trying to balance it. And we're here tonight to listen to all of you. Our concerns are the same as your concerns. We have those oil and gas wells throughout our city, but we need to know who legislates that, who has the right to impose moratoriums. Because if we do a moratorium right now, my belief is that they could go ahead and start fracking, and we can't stop them because it's a state-regulated industry. So I want to make sure when we do something on this council, that we're taking the steps to protect all of our residents, whether it be financial, safety, and that we consider it all at the time we make those decisions. But I do appreciate you coming in and sharing with us your concerns.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else on the sign-up sheet to speak this evening? Well, hang on one second. We have multiple people in the audience that would like to get up and speak, and I want to afford them the opportunity to speak. I would, however, ask when you come forward to please not, you know, you can say, "I agree with this person," or "I agree with that person," but please don't reiterate the stuff we've already heard this evening so that we don't drag the meeting further than it has to be. So, I'm going to start. Please raise your hand, those of you that'd like to speak. Okay? Yes. No, I can't give them a time limit because we didn't give the rest a time limit. I want to be fair to all the residents. Let's start right here in the closest to the front. Yes, sir, you. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Michael Scanlon, 10635 Nucleus Street. Mayor, and listening to you, I agree with what you were saying there. You know, I see what you're saying. You're going for as much as you can get. You don't want to... But let me just leave it at this. I trust the judgment of y'all. I know almost all of y'all, and I ultimately trust your judgment to do what's right for us. I got to express my concern earlier. I just want to let you know that I do.
Thank you so much. Now, let's go ahead, and I'll go back here. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. I'll get to all of you. Just be patient.
My name is Bob Miner. I live at 10083 Bogosa Court up in Reunion Commerce City. I would like to point out just one fact, and that's this mayor and councilmen, council persons. When we bought our property in Reunion, we relinquished our rights to water and to the minerals. And we took responsibility for giving those things away at that time. And because the oil and gas industry owns those rights, they have a right to do what they want with them. You have an obligation, I feel, as you said, Mayor, to protect us from environmental stuff and everything else. The minerals are theirs. We, as buyers of that property, gave up those rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Benson, did you have a comment?
Sir, I want to thank you for making that statement because a lot of times, people don't understand that. All of these rights were matters of record a long time ago, before anybody ever decided to subdivide or make a PUD out of Reunion. They do have rights. The mineral estate is always superior to the surface estate. And I know when I bought my house, there were probably 40 exceptions on my title policy. I wonder how many people actually read their title commitment or their title policy to their house to figure out what were the exceptions to their title. In other words, we're not insuring you over these exceptions. And I know, at least in Reunion, Shay Holmes worked out some kind of a deal with the holders of the mineral rights, restricting them to being able to drill in just a certain area of Reunion, where they can't come into our backyards and drill. So Shay, I believe, was trying to take care of us in that regard, and I think that they did. But the thing is, the two wells that we're talking about, one of which is not even in Commerce City, and the other one which is, they're not within Reunion, so they're not covered by that. But there are a lot of legal rights here, and that's what I have pointed out from the very beginning, that these people do have legal rights, and they're going to be, in most cases, superior to ours. But we're going to do whatever we can. We're going to push the envelope, I hope. Push the envelope of state preemption to do everything that we can to regulate what's happening out there. We're going to go as far as we can go. But that's just me. I don't know that that's what the rest of the council wants to do or not. I hope it is. As far as I'm concerned, I'm voting to push that envelope as far as we can.
Okay? Next person in the audience, the closest one to me. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record again, please.
Name is Shirley Curless, and I live at 5721 East 67th Avenue. I've been involved in the oil and gas industry longer than most, long before most of you were even born. And when it comes to fracking, I would like you to look at the mountains that we have and how many years they have been fracking in the mountains. And if it caused earthquakes, we wouldn't have mountains today. It is the most strictly governed industry that we have. And when they start to frac or they do anything like that, Slumber Jay will come in. It is an oil well service company, and they are very aware when and if an earthquake is going to happen, and they will stop. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Mr. Taves?
Please state your address and name and address for the record, please.
Robert Taves, 712066, Plaids Commerce City, Colorado. One thing I've got to say to all you council members, thank you. You guys have been busting your humps on this and doing a wonderful job. Thank you for the staff. Thank you for everybody. The only thing that I've got to say is you guys have been right on. You are right on the money, Mr. Ford. Right on. Okay? I don't believe in this ordinance. I think it should not have to be there. If you can work on it and work with this, the oil and gas company, to get a voluntary month-to-month thing or six-month thing or whatever, get a voluntary, I believe you ought to go for it, and 100%. If you can avoid doing this, do it. Okay? All I got to say is thank you. You're right on the money. Stay with it.
Thanks for coming in this evening. Mr. Serna?
Please state your name and address for the record again, please.
14122, East 102nd Place, Commerce City, Colorado, 8022. I agree with everything that was said here tonight.
I need your name, Garrett.
Garrett Serna.
Thank you.
Other than the fact that the playing field is not the same, the players with these gas companies and all that have been in existence a lot longer than we've been a city in a sense. They've been preparing for all of this every time they went to this town and that town and this county and that county throughout the United States. You keep asking the questions of the experts that have been wrong. Why don't you bring the people that have experienced what has happened to some of these cities where they have been fracking? That's where the heart is, and that's where you're going to get the true answer. I know that you're working with the gas companies, but Excel embraced the input of the community, and they seeked answers. They didn't put a bullet in my head or a gun to my head. and they seeked answers. They didn't put a bullet in my head or a gun to my head and say, "If you don't do this, we're going to do this." Why do they, in a sense, put a carrot that if you don't do what we do, and if you don't hear what we have to say, we're going to sue you? That's not wanting to work together. To me, that's not building trust. And it puts you guys in a hell of a predicament that you had nothing to do with. Thirty, forty years ago, when these permits were given, the environment, which the community is now, people are part of that environment, is entirely different now. You had wheat fields out there. We were dumping sewer from Denver out there. Well, now, we have homes, and our children are part of that environment. When the house value goes down, is this company going to assist in balancing the revenue for our school districts? We're having a hell of a time trying to pass bond issues for our school district up north. If we don't sell these homes, these school districts and these schools are going to go down. We're trying to build a better education so that we can bring more industry into Commerce City. There's got to be a balance. This company should not be forcing you to pass this. They should say, "We're going to wait." That gas is not going anywhere until it gets fracked anyway. And it's probably going up in price. Why can't they come and say, "We'll bring these people, and let's see what we did wrong there, and let's see how we can straighten it out here so we don't make the same mistakes?" Yes, you're listening to experts, but that's just in theory. Talk to the people that have experienced this, and that's the communities that went down because they didn't have any water, that went down because people left, that went down because there was reservoirs that were not taken care of. Those are the things that you have to look at. What is... what are the unknown factors that's going to affect Commerce City, and is this company willing to work with you if something goes wrong? Take a look at it when you... as you discuss it further. You have the time, and so should they. If they waited thirty, forty years to frackle, they can wait another six, seven months. I'll say it again. It's not going to go away. But don't threaten the community with a lawsuit because it doesn't work. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I have someone who wants to say something. Mr. McWhedon?
Mr. Serna, thank you very much for the comments. And you're asking the questions that we're trying to put forward through the committee. One of the things that we've done, though, in our last meeting, was try to narrow the focus. There are any number of examples as far as the movie Gasland, or any number of other examples where problems have occurred. Many of those have occurred prior to a significant change in the rulemaking here in Colorado, where they made changes to the state regs that change how industry operates. That's what we're told. Do we have a full and firm sense that that's accurate? Not yet. That's why the discussions are continuing. But we're trying to understand those questions, but we're trying to limit discussion or focus discussion on what's unique about Commerce City. Many of those things have happened in environments that are very different geologically and every other way than what we see here in Commerce City. And so we want to make sure that we take those into mind. They help guide us to make sure that we're asking questions. But we also have to be savvy enough to focus on the realities of the Commerce City environment. And so that brings up the refuge. It brings up the unique rock. It brings up the position relative to home. So those are the questions that we are seeking answers to so that we can use those in our ultimate recommendation back to council. So thank you very much.
That's all I got to say. Mr. Douglas?
Mr. Comer, coming forward. Yes, I agree with you. You know, as we dive more deeply into this, we do need to hear the dark side of this industry because it's... to me, there's a lot of things that are not pretty about this. And one is air quality. And, you know, as far as the water, you know, we've been told that the water table there, where that one well was fracked, there wasn't a water table up there. But we're looking at the long-term effect, fifteen, twenty years, how that's going to affect our city. And you're right. When these rights were bought, there wasn't homes up there. So it does change the equation, and that's what the well company has to consider as well. So it's great to hear from the expert because that's their field, but I also like to hear from the experts who are against this and why. What is the big reason? Why can't they do this? So we also need to see the downside of this. It's nice that people are going to be able to extract the well and get the royalties off of that, and that's great. This is America, and you can do that. But there's also, you know, we have to make sure we're doing the right thing here. So I appreciate you coming forward.
One more comment. Please keep in mind that it's not twenty years that you're looking at. If they hit gas or if they hit oil, it's a hundred years. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for coming in this evening, Mr. Serna.
Thank you.
Now, in the audience, who's left that would like to speak? Sir, please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Matt Lepore. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Beatty and Wozniak. We are outside counsel to Hill Corp. The main reason I'm here this evening is to make sure you all understand that Hill Corp. is willing to re-up on the thirty-day stand-down, voluntary stand-down on fracking and drilling of the wells within the city limits. We also want you to understand that that does not mean there will be no activity at those wells. As I explained last time I was here, there has to be certain activity in the wells to hold the lease. So you'll see people out there. Things will be getting done, but we won't frac and we won't complete the well during the thirty days. Obviously, we think the dialogue, the structure that you have all set up is a better way to go than the ordinance for reasons that many of you have clearly articulated tonight. From my perspective, you all have been tremendously responsive to the concerns raised by your constituents. Mr. Councilman Benson asked how many other communities are involved in this, and your council identified several. I'll add to that list. Douglas County, Arapahoe County, Elbert County, Route County, counties really and municipalities up and down the front range. This is very new to these communities. And just as with you all, a lot of unanswered questions, a lot of information. I think you've seen the oil and gas industry, the trade associations, I think engage with you in good faith. I know you don't have all the answers that you'd like. It's a frustrating process at times, I think, for all of us at the table, but I think it's been reasonably productive. So I would encourage you to keep going the way that you've gone. I have to agree with Councilman Benson. Litigation is a horribly blunt, clumsy instrument, and the only winners will be the lawyers. Mr. Castilian, the representative from Anadarko, said at our first task force meeting, "If we get to litigation, you know, we've lost. We've all lost." So let's try to keep a dialogue going. You all, to me, your understanding has come a tremendously long way from my perspective in a relatively short period of time. I knew thirty days ago or twenty days ago when I was here that, you know, the one month was not going to answer everybody's questions. I don't think another thirty days is going to answer everybody's questions. I don't think six months is going to answer everybody's questions. But let's continue the process. There are just shy of forty-seven thousand active wells in the state of Colorado now. There were about three thousand new wells started last year. You don't hear about a lot of catastrophic events over decades of oil and gas development in the state. I'm a native Coloradan. I've lived here all my life. I love the mountains. I love the outdoors. I want to preserve the environment for my fourteen-year-old son as much as you all do, as much as the citizens behind me do. But we have industry. We have the civilization and the society we have today. For a lot of... we have a lot of industry we have to appreciate, creates that lifestyle for us. All of those industries have risks as well as rewards. The objective is to manage the risks in a sound and fair way based on facts and science. And I think that's where all of us are trying to go. The risk is never going to be diminished to zero. There will be incidents, just as there was an incident at Suncor. But we do our best. There are spills related to oil and gas operations. I wish there weren't. I wish we could get it to zero. We probably can't. But by now, I know that most of you know that there is a very robust state regulatory regime in place. I don't know of an oil and gas company that deliberately is interested in fouling the environment, in antagonizing its neighbors, in poisoning the air or water. Nobody does business that way, I don't think, anymore. Things have changed. In the mid-seventies, our understanding of the environmental impacts of our industrial activity, you would be shocked at how crude it was as recently as the mid-seventies. There was... there were no environmental scientists before about 1975. There were water and sanitation experts that worried about things that made the water look bad and smell bad and taste bad. We had no understanding of contaminant fate in transport like we do today. There were no federal environmental laws until about the mid-seventies and the early eighties. We have come a long, long way. The oil and gas permits don't last thirty years. Permits last two years. People have held those leases for a long period of time, deciding to develop or not develop for one reason or another, where they've produced a well, and the well has been productive for thirty years. So yes, there are facilities out there whose environmental protections or mitigating technologies may not be state-of-the-art for today. But if you put a new facility out there, and even the old facilities have to be retrofitted to some extent, but new facilities comply with current regulations. So I'd like to see us continue the dialogue. I'd like to ask you not to adopt the ordinance, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
Have one person would like to comment. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I had a question. You said there's forty-six thousand wells. How many... you may not have this answer, but I haven't... I forgot where I read this, but there are fourteen actual horizontal fracking wells in the state of Colorado. Is that true?
Fourteen? Is that your question?
Yeah, horizontal.
There are far more than fourteen. I don't know the number right off the top of my head.
Okay.
I will tell you this, and I attended the Oil and Gas Commission hearing this morning, and I'm sorry I didn't bring their staff report. Their staff report is on their webpage. A lot of good statistics. As a percentage of all the wells completed in Colorado, we're up to about thirty-six percent are horizontal. I think I have that number right. It's doubled just about every year over the last five years. So if you look back just about five years, it was about two percent of wells completed were horizontal. And then it went to four percent. Then it took kind of a big jump up in that third year, and now we're roughly about one out of three wells. And in this area, this corridor that we're talking about, the Niobrara shale formation, that is a formation, a tight shale formation, that economically and productively, it's... I can only see it going more and more towards horizontal wells. But also understand that at this point in time, most vertical wells are fracked anyway. I mean, there's a difference in that... mostly, there's a difference in how much water, how much frac fluid it takes to frac a horizontal well, which is, you know, four thousand feet lateral length versus a vertical well, which just hits that formation, you know, going this way instead of going this way, if that makes sense.
Right.
But, you know, I think, Councilman, if you looked at the OGCC's staff report, I think you would find a number of horizontal wells in the state.
Okay. Thanks. Oh, and one question, one more thing, too. You know, we talk about litigation. We're, you know, we're discussing here. I don't know. It would be nice to not have that part of our dialogue, you know, as far as we're talking here. And then if we get to a certain point where we feel like, well, if we don't do something, we're going to get litigation, you know, go through litigation process. I think, you know, as far as talking and everything, this might extend out quite some months because it might have to take it to another level. So I'd like to know, you know, if litigation shouldn't have to be part of the process because we're trying to work through this issue here. I keep hearing litigation, litigation. And if we're... if we're willing to talk, you know, as far as moratorium, whatever, it's all about talk and make sure everybody's doing the right thing. Because yes, you have mineral rights, and yes, industry wants to get to that. And we're looking at what's the best and safe way, if anything's going to happen, at any, you know, between now and whenever. So as far as litigation, I think we should just not even bring that up because we're trying to... we're trying to make things right here. And I don't feel... I don't want to feel like I'm being blackmailed if we don't do something a certain way. Hey, you guys have to go to court and all that. It shouldn't be the issue. We're here as a city. We're all come here and talk. So just take this litigation and set it to the side for now because it shouldn't be part of the equation.
I have a couple of responses. Litigation, I think you hear right now in this context because we hear moratorium on fracking. I've heard several of your fellow councilpersons say they believe, based on advice, I assume, from council and experts, that the city does not have the statutory authority to ban fracking. I happen to agree with that. I mean, that's my own personal view as well. If you pass a moratorium, I sort of have an obligation to advise my client on their options. One of their options clearly is to file suit. Where I would like us to go with the task force and beyond is, and I'll be candid here, I'd like us to get there sooner rather than later, is some proposed alternatives to this moratorium, be those a memorandum of understanding, such as other councils and counties have adopted, where they come up with an agreed-upon set, essentially, of special conditions so that in order for an oil and gas company to get a permit in County X, they know going in. They will have certain requirements that are not part of the standard set of oil and gas commission rules. Okay? So an MOU is one approach to doing that. Don't call it an MOU. Call it a set of standard... of conditions of approval. Come up with a set of conditions of approval. If you're going to frac, I'm making this up on the fly, if you're going to frac within half a mile of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, the following things will be true in your drilling and completion and reclamation operations. All right? Those are things I think the industry can get behind, live with, talk with you about. You know, I know we've talked about working more closely with the local government designee. Get your local government designee involved. We've talked about notification issues. We've talked about a lot of issues. Let's get some concrete things. Let's start to get some concrete things. The concept of the task force was a list of agreed-upon consensus recommendations. I don't think there's anything on the list right now. I'm not saying there should be, but I'm saying if you want litigation to stop being part of the dialogue, we need an alternative. of the dialogue, we need an alternative.
And that's just it about the moratorium because this is, it is a huge subject. And we are hearing from the experts, and you guys give us a lot of, a lot of information, which is great. We also want to hear what the causes and effects are, the unknown, and then also the dark side of the industry, places where things didn't go so well. And we haven't heard a lot about that either. I mean, we've heard, you know, oil and ga, I mean, the gas land moving and all that, but then, you know, that, the industry, they have, say that some of that's not true. So we're just going to make a fair assessment of this, and it's not something where we're building a house here. We're, you know, we're, we're talking about a city here. And then looking at the oil and gas activity map here, you know, roughly, our city is about two and a half, three miles, I'm sorry, city boundary around the arsenals, at least two and a half to three miles around Arsenal. So, yes, I would like to, you know, we have these meetings, start collecting certain things, but that's, that's what we have an oil attorney for. But, you know, we're not there yet. I mean, we just, you know, we just, we just scratched the surface now. So I believe we're going to get there, but I don't want to get there so fast that we miss something. So that's, that's one of my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you all.
Is there anyone else in the audience who hasn't had the opportunity to speak on oil and gas that wishes to come forward at this time? Seeing no one, I'll end the comments session for the oil and gas, and we'll ask the council what their desires to move forward on the executive session, if they would make a motion. Mr. Macaldoney?
Thank you. I would move that we convene an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402-sub-4-sub-B for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding legal factors associated with the current moratorium discussion.
Okay. Mr. Benson?
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Attorney? Good to go?
Good to go.
Okay. We'll be in an executive session. We'll try to keep it as short as possible, and we'll be right back with you folks. Do you want to vote?
We need to, I think.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. How's that?
Yeah. You know, I would say that anybody's got a knife and a plate or a fork, you can come up here and get a piece of this cake.
Call the meeting back to order. I will ask the attorney to give us a recap for the residents that are still here on our discussions.
The city council had extensive discussions in conjunction with the special legal council and myself, as well as the deputy city manager and the acting city manager, interim city manager were present for these discussions. The upshot of the discussions were this, that the city council feels that for the benefit of the city, we want to know what the oil and gas companies and oil and gas commissions are doing. And to keep them at the table for discussions, we learn and know what they're doing because in that way we can react and hopefully have a cooperative goal toward resolving the fracturing, hydraulic fracturing issues. The goal of the council here is to get a memorandum of understanding with the oil and gas commission, as well as an amendment to the city land use code regarding oil and gas regulations that would protect the health and safety of the citizens to the point where we can legally do so. And that's the goal. And with the memorandum of understanding, we expect that there will be issues that are resolved with the oil and gas industry and the oil and gas commission that are with the consent of those entities that protect the city even above and beyond what we could get if we tried to enforce requirements on the oil and gas industry. In other words, we get a voluntary agreement to do certain things that we couldn't otherwise get. That's the goal. And that's why the city council has indicated in the executive session discussions that they are in favor of continuing the discussions. And that would mean then we would impose a voluntary moratorium with the consent of the oil and gas commission and Hill Corp., which is the owner of the, or the operator of the pending well application. And we would impose that, the discussion was, we'll see how the motion plays out, but till February 27, 2012, with the goal being that during that period of time, the review committee will make progress and would expect to have something that the oil and gas commission and the oil and gas industry would feel acceptable. And if during that time period, there has not been an agreement reached, then at that point, we'll be right back where we are tonight and we'll have to then consider imposing a voluntary moratorium or just not proceeding with it, or maybe even extending the moratorium, depending on what the agreements would be with the oil and gas commission and with Hill Corp. So basically, that's the discussion that took place. And so tonight, city council, if I heard correctly, there was a feeling, and I feel emotional, be forthcoming, that will continue the second reading of the ordinance in order to allow for continued discussions with the condition that there is a voluntary agreement by the oil and gas commission and Hill Corp. to voluntarily extend a voluntary moratorium. And I have email communications from both the oil and gas commission and Hill Corp. indicating that they consent to an additional 30-day voluntary moratorium. So that's the status of it, depending on now what city council does with the discussion.
Thanks, Bob. Mr. Mackel Downey?
Thank you. I would put forward a motion that council continue ordinance 1880 for further consideration on the 27th of February.
Mr. Benson's the second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bullock?
No.
No? Seeing no discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion is carried. We'll go another 30 days and continue progress. Next item on the agenda is a study item. Is staff ready to present?
Mr. Mayor, I do not see the staff or representatives from the Quality Community Stakeholder Committee that were intending to present tonight. We're going to try and find out what the status of that presentation is, so perhaps we could move to the next item on the agenda.
You want to postpone it?
We can either postpone it tonight, or certainly at this point, I think it's safe to move to the next item on the agenda.
Okay.
Do we need to formally continue that? Lay it over?
The next item is an executive session. Right, if we're going to continue it...
I was told that Maria Gonzalez was going to present the update, but she had to leave.
Right.
We did send via email a recent update from the committee, so I think we can remove that item from tonight's agenda.
Let me see, is council prepared to make a motion to continue this? Mr. Moreno?
Move to continue the presentation by the Commerce, City Quality, Community Initiative Stakeholder Group to a future meeting.
Okay. Mr. Mackel Downey?
Second.
Motion is second to continue it to the next meeting. All those in...
For a future meeting.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is another executive session. What are the council's desires? Mr. Mackel Downey?
Would move to convene an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402-sub-4-sub-B for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding trucking industry tax issues.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Benson seconds that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We will be back in a little while, as soon as we're done with this executive session.
I'll call the meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is administrative council business. Get up here where you belong. Do ya? Good. Well, then you need to be up here pushing your buttons so that we know you have one thing. Mr. Bullock.
Everybody's been reminded that in the morning, we have the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce breakfast down at the Weston Hotel. So I just want to put a reminder out there and as administrative, Mickey's on Wednesday night also.
Adcock.
At Adcock meeting.
Is the program going to be in Spanish?
Yes, sir. We'll bring you a translator.
You're gonna have an interpreter?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. McAlton.
Just to follow up on the discussion from the meeting prior to the Martin Luther King break. We talked about retreat planning. Mr. Moreno's got the document that will be used for submission of ideas for staff. Staff is also going to package up the PowerPoint and the original spreadsheet of prioritized submissions into a PDF document so that you can look at it on your tablet to give that some reflection and then be able to submit additional items for consideration for the retreat. And I think timing would be as quickly as you can get that turned around. As soon as you get that from staff, try and get those inputs back. If there are questions on the spreadsheet, then I would say, and this is maybe it's you, Mr. McBroom, I know Tom knows that data very well, or perhaps reach out to those on the retreat committee. We can provide some background. So, Mr. Mayor, however you'd like to proceed on that, we could certainly field those questions, but at least get that input moving for staff's help.
Tom, I'll be in to sit down and talk with you about my desires. And I would implore the rest of the council to take the time. Either fill out the form, get it to Tom, or at least talk to him about it so that he has the information moving forward. Okay, Councilwoman Carson.
Mr. McBroom, I was gonna forward this email to you, and I never did. So, Belle Creek, as we all know, we shoo a lot of traffic through there with this road construction that's going on and everything. The email is referencing the traffic that they're experiencing there and the high speeds. I don't think it's solely because of the road construction that's going on. I think that they have had an issue like this. The question of the citizens there in Bell Creek is what can they do? They don't believe that just beefing up police patrols will stop this. They would like to go forward with maybe some traffic calming devices, some signs, children at play, whatever it is that slows traffic down. So, I don't know. Does that mean we need to step up and take a look at study the traffic patterns there?
This is certainly not the first time we've had residents raise those issues in a given neighborhood. So between our public work staff and our police department, we do have a process that we can go through with that neighborhood to try and identify improvements that'll actually improve the circumstance. Traffic calming devices aren't always the right thing to do. There is a methodology to looking at their concerns and understanding from a technical standpoint what we can do to make the circumstance better.
Okay.
So we will absolutely reach out to them.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mackel Downey.
Apologies, I thought I had one more item. I had a citizen reach out to me with a concern about drainage and snow and ice buildup just east of, or west, I'm sorry, of Landmark, not Landmark, Second Creek Elementary on the street that is immediately west of the school. Laredo, sorry, not Landmark. Laredo and roughly 98th. Apparently, she's been in contact with staff before, some time ago, but never, this is some time ago. I think within like a two-year period. And doesn't recall ever hearing back from anyone on resolution. And the last round of snow and prolonged cold kind of reinforced the issue for her. And so she wanted to get an update. I didn't get a chance to drive through that street until after things had melted out a bit, so I couldn't see exactly where it's at. But the description was essentially west of Laredo along 98 there. So it's one of the crosswalks that's used for the kids to go to and from school. And I assume it's an odd portion of that road. So I don't know if we can figure out who, if we can dig up the prior concern and see what the status was of that. But I can put you in touch with the specific citizen.
That would be helpful, and we'll absolutely check it out.
Great, thank you.
Councilwoman Moreno.
Brian, I also sent you, just forwarded you an email from a constituent about a constituent concern. I won't take any time here explaining the situation, but just wanted to make you aware of it. Also, I mentioned to the council before about another group service project. Habitat for Humanity was interested in getting us to help build one of the homes in Commerce City. They have reserved the March 31st build date for us. And I think I remember some council members had a scheduling issue with that. But I asked if they'd have any alternative dates. And even though we won't maybe be able to do it as a big group, we'll still be able to get some time in to help build. The build day, on the actual build day, they have, they like for people to be able to volunteer the entire day from nine to five, so just keep that in mind. You have to be 16 years old to volunteer. Sorry, I won't be joining you. That was a joke.
Is there an age limit, though?
It said that, yeah, I was called out, Mr. McBroom, for having to call out jokes. It's kind of sad that I had to call out that one, too.
Is there a maximum age?
An age limit? I'm worried about Jim over there.
Is there a maximum age?
He just had a birthday.
I think you'll be all right, Mr. Benson. But March 31st, pencil it in. I will send an email out to the council as well.
The Historical Society wanted to know if we wanted to partner with them and do it the same day that they did it so we could both get them out of the way at the same time and have more people there.
What date is that, Mr. Bullock?
I will find out.
We'll coordinate.
Get back with you.
Okay, thanks.
I'm just giving you a hard time, Jim. Mr. Douglas.
Yes, I'd like to see if we could add a couple more seats on the committee on the resident side for the Oil and Gas Committee. And then Larry Quintana said that, I'm sure other council members received this, about a house that was destroyed by fire sometime back in November. It's a vacant house in 7650 Monocle Street. And to see what we could do as far as the city, where we stand on this. I guess the owners of this property are outside of the country.
It's in the county.
It's in the county.
I forwarded that to staff for...
Did you? Okay.
It's in Adams County. It's not in the city.
Okay. Mr. Mackel Downey.
Yeah, just a comment to Mr. Douglas on the committee. I actually have been weighing a similar consideration, but wanted to put forward the idea of adding a member of the Planning Commission and looking at some of the other municipalities who have had similar bodies put together for this matter. Having somebody from the Planning Commission has been a pretty consistent component because that way they've got a good sense of our comp plan, land development code as it sits today. They're used to hearing cases, and so they would bring, I think, an interesting perspective if that might be something that you'd be open to. That way, we could essentially get a delegate from the Planning Commission to act as an additional participant.
I'm sure we could have that additional, but I would still like to see two more seats at the table for the resident side.
Perhaps you and I can go grab coffee, and we can brainstorm on the matter and come back with a suggestion for council?
Yeah.
Okay. Seeing no one else, I was gonna bring up the house as well. We talked to School District 14 tonight. I got to talk to Larry in depth. And he was worried about the elementary kids going over into this building that's vacated and burned. And I explained to him that the concern would be that it's still trespassing if we go on there and we were trying to do anything. It is a house in the county. But if we can lend any type of even information to Mr. Quintana for the School District 14, I think that would help. What we would do if it was in the city and what he needs to look at. And I told him, I figured there's an abandonment process that would have to take place before the city could do anything if it was a city property. Maybe we can just get them some information so that they have a better direction because they don't know what to do. And so that they can proceed, at least talking to the county, about doing an abandonment or whatever that may necessarily be.
Certainly.
So that we, you know, those kids, a lot of those kids that go to that school are residents of this community. And so from looking at it from that perspective, I think that's the least that we could do is to try to help him with guidance on where to go and what to do. The other thing is I ended up getting a call from, I believe her name's Loretta, who runs the Fish over here off 56. Loretta Garcia, Fish. And she said now they're completely out of room. Fish is no longer operating in that building, and they're currently looking for a building. They're trying to get to some grant opportunities, excuse me, to help with a building. And I told her that I would ask for our Economic Development Department to look to see what is in our community that's vacant, where they could participate with the Fish program. And all of their funds right now are going towards food to help those who are less fortunate. So they would be looking at a grant opportunity. I know she has a meeting with Kristy Joplin over at Community Enterprise to talk to them. She mentioned a couple of different properties. One, which is the Totally property in Derby. I told her that also there is a group up at, is it Stewart Middle School running? That is taking on food from those who have extra and helping distribute that to those who are less fortunate up in that area. Maybe there's some way to put these entities together that are trying to help our community. And right now, in this economy, the need is citywide. And, you know, I don't know if you can find room with another nonprofit, what's out there. I do know that the building that we were, that PAC4, Partnerships for Healthy Communities, was renting a building next door to Community Enterprise. We have now merged Community Enterprise with Partnerships, and they are all in one building. I know we're currently renting that for another additional six months. Mr. Leeper owns that building. And maybe through our Economic Development Team, we could find out more about that and what those availabilities would be. Because I'd hate to see, as long as Fish has been in our community and as many people as it's served and continues to serve, I hate to see us lose another food bank, especially after the one at the church went away. So would staff please look into that? Let us know what there is for buildings, what options are out there. Maybe they could partner with the Stewart Middle School people. There may, you know, whatever groups are out there that maybe can combine and help stay, keep this alive, might help Stewart Middle School folks as well. And just respond back to Loretta and let the council know what steps have been taken. And I also mentioned that they should contact the county and see if they have any additional grant funds that may be available to help them because Fish was, you know, a big participant of the county project on having the food availability. And with that, I have nothing further, so we will move on to the next agenda item, which will be reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, we did send out a fairly lengthy report just a few minutes ago, actually. Normally, we send out the update to council earlier in the evening. We had some staff pulled off this task to work with the numerous media folks who showed up at City Hall late in the afternoon prior to the meeting. I won't go through those updates tonight. A number of good updates in there. A number of responses to previous council action items. So please take a look at the report. If you have questions about any of the information that we've provided in the report, don't hesitate to call us.
Okay. Mr. Turner.
I have just one item. In checking with Brian, I won't be making any presentations. It won't be necessary from a legal point of view to make any legal presentations at the retreat. Fortunately, because about a year ago, I scheduled a trip to Puerto Vallarta, and you guys scheduled the retreat while I was gonna be there, that's a shame. But I'm afraid I'm gonna miss the retreat. So...
Have you let Karen know?
I'll have someone there. There'll be someone there for legal advice as needed. But fortunately, I'm not on the agenda for any presentations, so that makes me feel a little less guilty about not being there.
Bob, by letting us know enough in advance, I think we have time to reschedule the retreat.
I wouldn't ask you to do that because you had so much trouble. Okay, nothing else.
Okay. I'll start with Mr. Benson.
Yes, thank you. Of course, on the 18th last Wednesday, we had our Oil and Gas Task Force meeting. Right after that, I went downtown to the Dr. Cog meeting. And one of the things that we discussed, we had a presentation by the executive director of CDOT. Is that, Tom, is that Don Hunt? What's his? Don Hunt, right. CDOT is going to put, or at least it's in discussion right now, they're gonna try to get another 2.5% sales tax over and above the, 0.25% as opposed to 0.4. RTD is trying to get 0.4 added under our sales tax. CDOT wants to add another 0.25. So you're gonna be looking at 0.6500ths of a cent in sales taxes that you're gonna have a chance to vote for. And there was a lot of discussion about, well, there's been no accountability by RTD. How are we gonna be assured of CDOT's and RTD's accountability going forward? And I think that's something that they're gonna look at. But it's just a way to raise money for transportation in the state because obviously the gasoline taxes are not getting the job done. And we get back, we pay in a lot more to the federal government than we get back. So this is just that 2.5% will raise a lot of money. I don't know what the projection was for the amount of money that was going to raise per year. But look for that to be on your ballot. It's gonna be a total of 0.65% on your increase in sales tax on the ballot this fall. Is that gonna pass? I don't know. Anyway, I want to thank Anthony Stellato for baking this cake for me and for Michelle Rogers for going to pick it up. And really, if anybody wants part of this cake, you're welcome to it because it'll take me a long time to eat this much cake. And it was, and it was the big 7-0 on Friday. So I've only got a few more years to live, so you guys, you guys be nice to me.
We will.
Thank you.
And you know, honestly, on that cake, the police department always loves extras, so...
Hey.
You know what? They're here tonight, and nothing like giving a cake to the cops.
You know, that's great. I'll just keep a little, a couple of pieces of it, and you guys can have the rest of it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Carson.
I can't even remember what. Oh, I know that we attended, a couple of us, the History Hunter. The wrong way again? Attended the History Hunter over there at Adam City High, and it was a very enjoyable night. Great job. Would like to see more of those kind of events take place. So I think that was about all. I don't know. I really don't remember.
Okay. Mr. Teter.
No report.
Mr. Moreno.
Well, I'm glad Councilman Benson brought up the RTD issue. It's not exactly correct to say that 6 tenths of a percent will be on the ballot. RTD, I believe, will proceed with the 4 tenths. But in terms of the CDOT going to a ballot, they need to have legislative authority to go to a ballot. And apparently, they have not talked to the state legislature to ask if they could do that. So it's unclear at this point if that will actually happen. I had a lovely meeting today with our new RTD representative, Kathy Williams, and just talked through some of the issues that RTD is dealing with and what ultimately is gonna come down in 2012. I will be going on a tour of Union Station and some of the rail projects on Wednesday. And I told Kathy I was gonna bring their worst critics, so I invited Mr. Benson. And so it should be a good experience for both of us. I had a wonderful time Friday. We had an ice cream social for the kids at Timig Elementary and for the Victim Services Program. They raised over $600 for the program. So an ice cream social is just a small token of our appreciation, and it was a great time, so that's all I have.
Mr. Douglas.
Really no report. I was sick most of the week last week and couldn't attend the History Hunter, which I had on my agenda, so thank you.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Not much this evening, but I too attended the History Hunter event Thursday evening. And I have to say that it was very delightful. We have a lot of talented people that we, JD and I are both on the cultural council. And so we definitely need to tap into more events like that for our city, for our residents. I think it would be really, really a fun thing to do on a continual basis if we had events on a monthly basis. I think that would be great. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mackel Downey.
My daughter is a huge fan of the History Hunter. What was his little sidekick's name, the young lady?
Scout.
Scout. Yes, she was incredibly thrilled because at the end of the program, she got a hug from Scout, and Scout gave her one of our carnations. So my daughter is absolutely hooked on it and has been playing the CD over and over again. Great performance. It's neat to see that production. And I don't know that I realized that he had done essentially a trial run of this about a year ago. So this is sort of the reworking of that. And just, you know, they are making great progress, and it'll be exciting to see how this evolves over time. So hats off to the community that have come together and helped make that a reality. That was great. Obviously, we had a couple rounds of Oil and Gas Committee meetings over the last couple of weeks. And unfortunately, I missed the ice cream social on Friday due to a conference call. But Dominic, I'm glad you're able to make it and represent for us. That was an exciting contribution and a yearly effort that the kids at Timig undertake in support of the Victim Services Board. So neat, neat stuff. Thank you.
Mr. Bullock.
Just echo what everybody else said. I went to History Hunter and Oil and Gas Meetings, and it was a really good... I went to History Hunter and Oil and Gas Meetings, and it was a really good last Monday off. Thank you.
Well, I had multiple meetings. I'm not gonna lay them all out, but I think one of the more productive meetings was myself and Ms. Ram Cordero and Mr. Bullock met with some folks that were really driving the DIA station for the light rail and wanted our position as a community as to what site is better. I took the stand, as did Mr. Bullock, that the site along Tower Road that has more of a potential direct impact on Commerce City is the better site for us. And that if they want, and they mentioned, well, you need to think about regionalism. And I said, well, then you need to come back to the table with dollars to widen Tower Road and make some of those concessions. So I think we made some progress. They're supposed to come back with some other ideas and alternatives. So that meeting went very well. I also want to thank School District 14 for inviting us this evening to a meet and greet where they brought some light snacks and really threw out the welcome mat to have a good relationship with them, with this new council and their new board. So everybody got a couple hours to at least visit and get to know who's who and so that we know who to contact and how to deal with our relationship with School District 14. I found it interesting that they said the old high school is up for sale at 1.5 million, and that that is the cost of demolition is 1.5 million. So basically, the property's for free if someone wants to demo it. So hopefully, we get somebody, you know, whoever buys it, we get some sort of a decent mixed-use type of development or something over there that really works good with the community. And I would hope that our Economic Development Department would drive any interests their way for people that have a desire to develop that type of a property. And I'm, you know, like I said, multiple meetings. I wanted to go to History Hunter, but I was still in meetings here and was unable to attend that. I did get to have a good sit-down meeting, and I've been trying to do it with the different directors. I had a sit-down meeting with Tom not too long ago, but I got to have a sit-down meeting with Jim Hayes, and we talked about a lot of different things. And one of my main concerns and what I'm really pushing for is that we can get our permitting process to the point where it's more user-friendly and we get the over-the-counter type of permits for fences and garages and sheds and those type of things so that we're not having to have our citizens wait for a long period of time where other communities are doing this on an over-the-counter type of basis. And I know staff's working on that, but I wanted to let the citizens know that those are some of my big issues. You know, we have, I did have a budget meeting, a budget update meeting with Roger and some of the other folks, other staff members. We have to be prepared to meet a 2013 budget, you know? So that's one of the primary goals that we have to proceed forward with. I think we need to improve our permitting process and do the reorganization of the city. And I know staff's working diligently. I just didn't want the citizens to know that those things are falling through the cracks. They're being constantly worked on. And so most of my meetings have been with different department heads. Things are moving forward in a good manner, and I think they're just, it's just gonna be amazing what we get done with this council, having a little bit of time to work on those kind of issues. We've been kind of held back. You know, me being sick didn't help. Having the holidays right after the election didn't help. Missing, you know, these three meetings that we didn't have didn't help. We got a little backed up. I hate to see the hour on these council meetings going to the point that it is. I know we're working on getting back to study sessions so we don't end up with so much discussion, and we have a better idea of what we're dealing with. And I think Councilwoman Elliott has a great idea of trying to put the executive sessions prior to the council meeting so that we can try to take care of that and not leave our residents sit out here until this hour of night. Since it's getting late, I will stop there and thank everybody for coming this evening. The City Council is adjourned.